She ordered the agenda because we're supposed to start with the pledge. So, we'll do that. All rise and let's do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor, relative to changes of the agenda, I was thinking that perhaps we should maybe move, and maybe not, whatever the council wants to do, it's not something I have to, or we have to do, but the unfinished business, whether we should move that to the end of the meeting. Just so we can get, if people are here for other items, we can do that, or we can have it in the same order, whatever you want.
Mr. Mayor, I was going to suggest the same thing, or ask for the same thing.
So, item nine, if we would move that till after all of items under 10?
Yeah, that's what I was, that way, we wouldn't run into the situation we, I mean, I'm not saying we will have, but last time, we had folks here staying for the duration.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Michelle Durand may not be, but she'll just have to hang out. Very good. So, just so the public knows what we did, we took consideration of the call for special election and moved it to the very end of the meeting after new business. All right, next item is reports from closed session, which we didn't have. So, Mr. Rubens, you're off the hook there. We have nothing for you. You have nothing for us. Item four is council communications and announcements. This is an opportunity for council members to give brief communications about either meetings they've attended, some of us are on, or are all on various committees, so they can speak about that, or they might know something that's coming up in the community, that sort of thing. So, we'll go down the line here, and we'll start over here with Mr. Collins, who's back from Florida.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nice to be back. I just wanted to let people know, I serve on the Hart Board, which is the Housing Endowment and Regional Trust, and they just had a annual fundraising luncheon, which was very successful. And just to let you know, I appreciate being elected to that. I think that is going to be a very significant organization down the future as we look at how we're going to resolve some of the issues arising from our loss of RDA money.
Good, thank you. Mr. Olber.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I met last week after our prior meeting with staff for several hours to go over the proposed capital budget information that we were given, and very much appreciated all of the time the staff had devoted to that, learned a bunch of interesting things about it, gave them some feedback, which, you know, I'll leave it up to them as to how it gets incorporated, or if it gets incorporated in it, but I just wanted to thank them for the time.
Very good. Mr. Grisilli.
I attended a meeting the other night, actually, Mr. Collins was there also, where the SBW, I never get that right, SBWMA, right? Which is basically the organization that is the organization in between ourselves and ecology. It's a joint powers group of 12 cities, including the county, actually 11 cities in the county, I guess, to be exact. And the SBWMA gave a presentation relative to what's going on currently in the garbage pickup, recycling, et cetera, et cetera, and also a preview of possible rates in the future, which they indicate, and I think all of us that were around for the original contract felt were going to happen eventually, a flattening of the rates we anticipate, as opposed to spikes that we've had in this first year, actually last year, and this year, and possibly next year, but then, we hope to have a fairly flat situation because of the way the contract was written. But it was very informative, and I think it was a, it was good use of our time. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. And the only thing that I have to report on is that we all had a successful hometown days. I don't think we've met since then, so it's fair to say that. It was a very fine day of, starting with the parade, and then moving over to Burton Park, and a lot of things going on over there. And I just want to say that it is because of Linda Touche, her leadership in that, she's the lady that we gave the award to and recognition to at the last council meeting, and she is the big mover and shaker behind hometown days. So, we thank her for her service to the community again. And then, like I said earlier before we started tonight, or the first thing we started with tonight was Healthy Cities, tutoring program had their awards ceremony tonight, and there were quite a few awards given out, and they're getting, to the age in that organization where they're giving away awards for 10 years' service, five years' service, and so we just want to give a thank you from the dais to the members of the community who participate and volunteer in that program. And with that, we'll move on to item five, which is-
Mayor, excuse me, four A is a discussion of council assignments.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. That's why you have a Vice Mayor, he keeps you in.
Through the Mayor, if I may, as well. Typically, it's this item of the agenda where you announce the planning commission appointments.
Hey, gotcha. I didn't see that part on there. So, it's good to have you too, Mr. City Manager. Thank you. And these fellows are sitting here in the audience anxiously waiting to find out. Okay, so, we did meet before the council meeting and conduct interviews for Planning Commission, and like usual, we always have a lot of good candidates. Tonight, we had seven candidates who applied for two openings that we have on the Planning Commission, and council deliberated afterwards, after the interviews, and we've chosen two of those, and they are Mr. Michael Corral, did I pronounce that correctly? Thank you, and David Silberman. So, and I want to thank especially those candidates who applied and didn't get called this time. Please, when we have other openings, not only in Planning Commission, but other things, please do apply, because you guys are great candidates, and we thank you for coming out So, with that, what was the other one that you wanted me to?
We have the assignments.
The assignments, right, okay. So, this item, I had the City Manager put this on our agenda. For the sake of the audience, what this is, is looking at our regional appointments to JPA boards and committee assignments and so forth, and I just wanted to have this on here. I know eventually, we'll be a five-member council again, and this will change, but primarily what I was after with this item is, does anybody who's had to take up slack feel overloaded with what they've got? And do we need to make any adjustments to the assignments that we have right here before us tonight? So, I wanted to open that up.
Mr. Mayor, I'm happy with my assignments, and I don't feel overworked, so I'm happy to continue on, or if you see fit to change it around, I'll leave that up to you.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Olber.
I'm perfectly fine with the way things are. I did want to mention that there is a topic, perhaps when we're done with this particular discussion, there's a topic related to these that I wanted to bring up.
Under this item?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
No, good, Mr. Mayor, like I said, we'll get hopefully the fifth person on, and that individual will be able to fill in where we needed a spot, and at this point, I'm okay.
Okay, very good. And I'm not sort of, but I'll live with it for a while. There's a couple of these that I don't really want to do anymore, but we'll wait till-
You do have that, there's a limited power in that, in your job, but you can reassign.
That's true, I could.
Because the previous mayor did that.
I know, and that's why I ended up with some of these. But I think I'll wait to do anything about that until we have a fifth member on board. But again, primarily, I just wanted to make sure that because of the adjustment, no one felt overloaded with being out in the evenings attending these meetings. So, it sounds like we're all in good shape. Mr. Olber, you had something you wanted to raise?
Yes, and it's a topic that, if it's of interest to my colleagues, we might want to agendize a brief discussion about this in the future. A number in the meetings of these committees that I've been on, I'm sure you folks as well, recently have been involved with adopting budgets for the next fiscal year. And as part of the discussions of those budget approvals on the committees that I've been on, I've been raising questions basically about trying to find out more about the compensation level of some of the staff of the various JPAs and whatnot, and what steps, if anything, have been done to try and rationalize costs, or address costs. And I was doing that because I thought it was the right thing to do, but then I realized that actually, that may be something, since I'm representing the council, that we want to talk about as a council, as to whether that's a direction that we want to go in. And so, that's basically the point I wanted to bring up. That's what I have been doing, happy to change it, happy to discuss it too, so going forward, we'd all be on the same page.
Very good. I'm just going to comment on that, and I think when we do get our retreat scheduled, it's something we may want to bring up. It is, we've talked about it before as a council, more in a general sense, not particular to the budgets, although you bring up a good point, but just the idea of, at times, if we can, getting ahead of some of these agendas, so that we can share the agenda ahead of time and give any input. It's not always necessary, some of this, some of the issues are rather routine that these committees and so forth deal with, but there are larger items that do come up. I would agree with you that budget is one of them, and compensation is part of that, where you may want to go to a meeting with your council behind you, and not be sitting there at the table just making decisions on your own as a representative of the council. So, I would agree with you, how we might be able to do that, I'm not exactly sure, but I think it's something that we can discuss. And I see the City Manager nodding his head.
Yeah, I think this would be exactly the kind of item where we'd want to get some feedback and have some dialogue amongst the council at the management retreat that we're planning. I don't think it will take up a lot of your time that day, but I think it would be pretty easy for you to put a framework in place about how the council might want to proceed to accomplish the things you're talking about in the future.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, no other comments about the assignments, and we won't be making any changes at this time to those. That brings us to public comment. Public comment is intended for people who would like to address the council on issues that are not agendized this evening, so if there's something that you would like to make the council aware of, an issue, or something you would want to speak about for a couple of minutes, this is the time to do that. I do have speaker cards, and I'm just going to go through these in the order that I have them here. The first is Ryan Daltrey. Ryan? And while he's coming up, Andre, you'll be second, and after, Ryan, you need to come up to the podium, and then after that is Glenn Gialino. Oh, I'm sorry, did I have that incorrect? Mr. Gialino, are you speaking under public comment? Okay, no, you're not. Okay, so we just have two. Very good. That's right, that's what you're there for.
I wasn't ready for the podium, but this should be very smooth, you know, one way or another, but anyway. My name's Ryan Daltrey. I just recently emailed you guys about solar power, and so I think you guys are ahead of the rest of the people here about myself. Excuse me. Excuse me, sorry.
Take your time.
Thanks.
We'll give you time for the clearing of your throat, it's all right.
Thank you. So, I'm a proud resident and community leader here, and I grew up here, first going to Burton Acres Central Middle School, and I was being involved with the community, you know, some academic awards when I was younger, along with, you know, volunteering recently with Second Harvest Food Bank, as well as a couple nonprofits, for Habitat Humanity, and also Green Alternatives. Where was that? And so, to get back to my point, I started a career in solar power, you know, kind of behind my views on, you know, kind of positivity towards the community, as well as kind of doing what I enjoy. So, I was hoping maybe to hopefully, you know, pass, or hopefully, maybe connect with some of you guys about my positive vision and, you know, care for our community on possibly, you know, installing new solar, or, you know, something of that nature. So, that was the idea behind the emails, and then I wanted to follow up on those emails with coming here and speaking to you guys as well. So, that's that, and hopefully, you know, maybe we could maybe connect once again to go on what I said earlier about maybe, you know, solar power for the community and stuff to, you know, empower the really positive vision that I think, you know, the majority of the country's beginning to, you know, go through, and, you know, kind of, we could really benefit from it. Excuse me.
Mr. Daltrey?
Yes.
We're going to need to wrap up here.
Okay.
We got your message, and I appreciate you coming, and showing your face here, and letting us know who you are.
Great.
Yeah, and I think you and I should sit down and have a cup of coffee.
Oh, yes, definitely. I think I saw you at-
Plantation.
Yes, yes.
You're welcome anytime to come sit down with me, and we can discuss.
Great, I love you.
It's interesting what you have there.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next, we have Mr. Carpio.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Andre Carpio. I have a grievance that I've made several years ago in my claim to get my solar car back that was stolen here by the city of San Carlo Police Department. This is the picture of my solar car here, and the title of ownership here. I don't know what else I need. I also carry insurance, you know, since day one, and I'm the one who made all the paperwork for the solar car as a manufacturer. So, this is a brochure here, and I mean, I could go on and on and on with proof. But my disturb here is that, as I told, the story of Solomon, and if you know about the scripture, Solomon had a two-party, he gave a hearing to both women who pretended to have the baby. I didn't have that. He gave the solar car to that stranger there who just had lip service and convinced the police it was his. But my grievance here is that both Grodko and Barsley, who've been here for so many years, who have heard my grievance here, they haven't done a thing about it. They fail to serve the public. The public doesn't serve you. You serve the public. You never investigated the police, you never corrected what's wrong, and you always took the attitude of ignoring my complaints, and this is bad. Don't ever run for mayor, and as I said, right now, your political career is over. I'm going to be sure that you cannot run anymore, you cannot hold office, you failed to supervise your department, the police, whoever, you know, you didn't do that. Documents are there, you missed your job. Get out of the politic. You're bad, you're corrupt. Thank you. And if you wonder why I'm afraid, everywhere, all the time, you see police shoot people. You think I was not afraid of your policemen here, they come with guns and armor vests? What's your problem?
Thank you, Mr. Carpio.
Counsel, you better give advice to these people, they need therapy, they need shrink.
Okay, where's my agenda? All right, that brings us to item, let's see here, I'm going to flip this over.
Six.
So, item six is approval of the consent calendar. The consent calendar will be approved as a basket, if you will, all items together, unless somebody wants to pull something out and discuss it separately, either someone from staff, the city council, or someone from the public, although I don't have any public speaker cards on the consent calendar. So, is there anybody that would like to see something discussed separately from the consent calendar? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion for-
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent calendar items six, A, B, C, D, E, and F.
Thank you.
Second.
We've had a motion and a second, can we have a vote?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olber?
Yes.
Mayor Groppert?
Yes. And we come to item seven, which is reports to council. I don't see anything listed here, but this is the time for staff to give us items of information. Do you have anything for us, Mr. City Manager?
No reports to council this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. Item eight is a public hearing. It's a consideration of a resolution authorizing adjustment to the cost of services schedules, otherwise known as a user fee, for fiscal year 2012 and 13. Ms. Mendenhall.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Rebecca Mendenhall, Administrative Services Director. Before you tonight is the annual update of the city's cost of services schedule. Every year, in conjunction with the budget, the staff reviews the cost of providing fee-related services to the public. In October 2008, council authorized a contract with NBS to develop a comprehensive overhead cost allocation and user fee rate schedule. This included an analysis of the total cost of providing services to the public, including direct, indirect, and overhead costs associated with individual services. The proposed changes to the methodology and rates were adopted at the May 26, 2009 meeting, and also at that meeting, the council adopted guidelines to adjust most fees annually to the CPI. Conducting a comprehensive study is not an annual requirement, however, as part of the current strategic plan, the city will be issuing RFPs for a new study to be completed this fall, with new rates to be effective next year. Majority of the fee increases before you tonight have been adjusted by the Consumer Price Index West of three and a half percent. This results in additional user fee revenue of approximately $125,000, which has been built into the proposed budget. Implementation of these fees would be effective following a 60-day wait period, or on July 30th, as per Government Code Section 66017. Administrative fees include copy charges, research, and business registration certificate reprinting. Photocopy costs and printing charges will remain at 25 cents. An additional cost for DVDs to store data related to public information requests was added at 50 cents to account for the cost of the DVDs. All other fees have been increased by the CPI. Building fees include services provided to the public through permits, plan review, and inspections. There are two new fees proposed tonight. The first is the green building review fee, and this fee is to cover the staff time, and the second is the geo-plan review fee. This is a pass-through cost from the city's geologist. The code compliance enforcement fee has been combined into the municipal code violation fee, and modified from $103 per hour to $100 per hour for the first violation, $200 for the second violation, and $500 for additional violations. All other building fees have been increased based on CPI, with the exception of the water heater replacement fee, which is proposed to remain the same for compliance purposes. Planning fees are those fees for services provided to the public at the counter, include zoning, design, and environmental review. There are four new fees proposed tonight. A waiver fee, which represents the staff time associated with allowing waivers from the zoning ordinance. A design review outdoor uses fee, which represents the staff time to review provisions for outdoor dining and retail, and has been added based on the zoning ordinance. Zoning administrative modification fee is based on staff time to review minor modifications to existing permits, and the domestic fowl and non-household pets, or fees for beekeeping is based on the staff time to review. Reduction in the public notice fee is due to the use of a more cost-effective noticing service. All other planning fees are recommended to increase by the CPI. Parks and Recreation fees include room rentals, picnic fees, special events, athletic permits, and field usage fees. There are two new fees proposed tonight. The first is deposits for patio and chestnut rooms, which will be refundable after the events, and a billiard room rental fee. All other fees will increase by the CPI, with the exception of the following: the ACC picnic reservations, the picnic site rentals, and the field use fees for baseball and soccer will remain the same to stay competitive with other venues. Public Works fees include plan reviews and inspections. There's one new fee proposed tonight, and that's to charge an annual permit for sidewalk dining and outdoor retail. All other fees will increase by the CPI. And Police Department fees include fees for impounded vehicles, unruly gatherings, excessive cats and dogs, just to name a few. The annual alarm permit fee is proposed to be reduced, based on a recent study by the NBS consultants. All other fees will increase by CPI, with the exception of copies of police reports, which are set at the legally allowable rate of $2 per report. So, that concludes the presentation. The department directors and I are here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay. Questions? Mr. Olber.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Mendenhall, just two questions to start with. Do you have a sense of what our own city-based increase in cost is? In other words, I know the CPI West is three and a half percent. Did our cost go up by something close to that, or higher or lower, or do we not necessarily know that?
It's between two and three and a half percent, so-
Okay.
About the same.
The other question I had concerns neighborhood block party permit fees. How much do, how much does the city gross a year out of those?
About $10,000 a year.
About $10,000 a year? And that's, each permit is what, several hundred dollars?
I have to defer to the Park and Rec Director on that.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of the City Council, Doug Won, Park and Recreation Director. Through the chair to answer council members, Olber's question, depending on the nature of the event and the amount of people there, but it's a couple hundred bucks, it's about $157 if you're a first-time user, $140 if it's a return user, but that's not the only fee. There's also insurance fees if they elect to get it through the city. So, if there's going to be alcohol served at the party, it'll be $227, and if it's a non-alcohol event, it's somewhat cheaper than that, at $122. Then we require barricades, and they rent the barricades, and that fee isn't through us, it's usually through a local rental agencies, agency, and it's $60, $60 to $75, depending on where they go, plus an additional $40 charge. So, it adds up rather quickly, what seems to be, you know, a reasonable starting fee of $150 can grow rather quickly.
Okay, and so, effectively, I'm just trying to add that up in my head. So, that would say we have something on the order of 20 to 30 block parties that take place in the city per year.
Yeah, and we actually have, depending on the year-
We average about eight. Eight?
Eight.
I'm having a hard time getting from eight to $10,000.
Yeah, that's what we have here, is, I have a record of the block parties that we've had in the past two years. We had, I believe, eight last year and six the year before.
Okay. Just so my colleagues understand where I'm going with this, actually, an eight with the fee structure you were talking about, Mr. Olber, may make more sense. I was going to ask that when we look at the budget for next year, and even for the fee schedule, that we consider doing at least one other community I'm familiar with in the area does, which is to waive some of those fees if the neighborhood is willing to host a get-together at which they would talk about issues in their neighborhood that relate to the city, and invite somebody from city staff or from the council to attend as a way of helping build community. And my thought was, if it wasn't costing us too much money to talk about waiving the fees, that would be tolerable. I mean, obviously, if we were raising hundreds of thousands of dollars in revenue a year, that would be a difficult pill to swallow, but if it's only six to eight things, it's actually hard for me to imagine how the fees are more than about $3,000 or $4,000, based on what you were describing.
Right, and Ms. Mendenhall may be referring to the overall special event fees-
That's true.
And not specific to these.
That's true. But in any event, that puts it in a perspective, what I'm asking people to think about is potentially waiving some portion of $4,000 a year in revenue, in the interest of trying to foster community. Thank you.
All your questions?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Over here to Mr. Collins.
I don't have any questions at this time.
I just had one. I don't know, Ms. Mendenhall, if you know the answer, or maybe somebody in community development. Design review outdoor uses fee. What's design review for outdoor uses? Is that where you build a shed?
Deborah Nelson, Planning Manager, through the mayor. Mr. Grisilli, when we did the zoning ordinance update, we had input through our stakeholders' interviews from the downtown that they really wanted to do more in the way of outdoor dining permits and outdoor retail sales on the city sidewalk. So last April in 2010, we had a morning meeting with the group and talked about design standards and amount of space that could be used, and also presented to them not only guidelines but fees from other communities. And what we came up with was, which we had not had before, was allowing outdoor retail sales on the city sidewalk.
Okay.
And some expansion of the outdoor dining.
Great.
And with that, we reviewed design review and annual fees for the benefit of using the city's property.
Great. Thank you very much, Ms. Nelson. I appreciate it. Now I know it's not backyards.
Okay. I had a couple of questions. I wanted to know from Mr. Long on our fee schedule, and I'm trying to find a page number. This looks like it's four of six for Parks and Recreation. I was a little confused. It seems to say that the fee for baseball, soccer, and so forth is per the event. It's not that we charge zero for these, is that right? So what I'm looking at, Mr. Long, it says, like, for instance, baseball sports tournament, new request permit, primary rate, $0 per unit, is per event. So I'm not sure if that means we just don't charge for these things, or...
That's correct. We do not charge for those.
We do not?
Right. We do have a per-player fee that we charge as part of a pool to assist in renovating facilities, and participants that play in these particular programs, soccer, baseball, softball, they pay an annual fee per player to contribute to that fund. But for the rental of the field or for the use of our field, there are no permits, there's no charge for permits for these particular programs.
Mr. Collins has a question.
Is that the practice in other cities?
It varies from city to city. There are cities that do charge for a permit fee and no player, per-player fee. That's just another way that they collect some revenues. Others have, it's completely subsidized by the city. So it really depends on the jurisdiction.
So are there any that have both? Not that I'm advocating for.
Yes, there are. There are that have both, a permit fee and a per-player fee.
And you feel that our fee structure in this regard is competitive?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm trying to follow that, then. If there's, let's say there's a baseball sports tournament, for each player in that tournament, there's some kind of charge?
For each player that's in one of the programs here, for example, in the softball program, for the girls' softball program, each player that signed up for that and registered for that program will pay a per-player fee above and beyond the registration they're paying for that particular organization. So they will add, for soccer, for example, it's $38. So that $38 will be an additional fee that will be paid to the city for everyone that signs up for a CYO soccer program.
I'm trying, so to follow this, then, our own participants, our own members of teams for these various sports pay a fee for field renovation, essentially?
Correct.
Correct. How is insurance covered? How are other uses? And, you know, there's more than just the field itself, right? There's other, there's restrooms and buildings that are associated with these events, porta-potties, I suppose, sometimes. How is all that taken care of?
That's handled through the league.
Through the league.
They'll take care of those fees for porta-potties. They contribute maintenance and items to sustaining the snack shacks. So they contribute in other ways outside of a user fee for permitting the use of the field.
And if, on the other hand, if we did charge some kind of fee for the tournaments, or the, I guess the, I don't know how that would be done necessarily. I'm trying to relate to my own experience as a wrestling coach. You know, usually, if we entered an invitational, when I was coaching at Burlingame High School, we would pay, as a team, a certain fee to enter that event. And I'm sure that covered some of the cost of holding that event at that particular venue. So if we did that, potentially, that could reduce the cost to our own athletes, paying $38 or whatever it is. Is that correct?
No, so there's two different fees. One is just to sustain or maintain the facilities that they have. So that's kind of a pool of money that's set aside specifically for that. Consider that restricted funds. It is limited to that. Then there's fees that they pay for entering a tournament. They do the same, as you said, in your example of wrestling. That will take care of that particular tournament, the trophies, the officials, any field maintenance that they have to pay out. That's all dedicated to those particular costs.
Okay.
So there are two different fees that they'll be paying. So if, for example, they host a tournament here at Highlands Field, there's no charge to that particular organization for hosting that. They will absorb those costs within their organization of taking care of the field, taking care of the snack shack, taking care of restrooms, and that'll all be taken care of through the fees that they charge those particular teams for participating.
Okay, I think I understand that.
The league gets the money from the...
League gets the money.
Teams coming from out of town.
Right.
That's correct.
Okay. Very good. Okay, thank you. Answered that question. And then I had a question which could relate to, again, Mr. Long, before you go sit down. Sorry about that. On the next page of your fee schedule, there's a hourly rates per fee for city staff, and your rates run between $150 roughly on the high end to about $80 on the low end. And then I'm comparing that to what seems to be the hourly rate when I'm looking at Planning Department, and theirs is more on the order of $235. If you add in the other surcharges, it's around $250. And I'm wondering, I don't want to cause a fight between departments here, but, and maybe this is better for the city manager, I don't know, but why the disparity in the hourly rates between what we're charging for Community Development Department versus what we're charging for Parks and Rec?
Ms. Mendenhall may be better to answer the question.
Okay, whoever, I don't know who's got the question.
But I think it's based on a, it's a formulaic answer, I'm sure.
Okay.
So the hourly rates are based on the cost allocation study that was done in 2008. So it's based on a number of variables. There's overhead charges that are included in there, and so certain departments may have more overhead allocated to them than other departments.
Okay. Anything else that's involved in that?
Well, it also depends on the number of personnel involved.
Wouldn't it relate also to the salary of the personnel?
Salary, yeah.
Because in Park and Rec, you're going to have younger, I mean, I'm sure some of the people that you charge are younger or haven't been, or part-time, or gosh knows what. And I would think that in the Planning and Community Development, they'd be full-time, fully vested, et cetera, et cetera. I'm just guessing, but...
There's more part-timers in the Recreation Department, yes.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Answers my questions. This is a public hearing, and so if anybody from the public would like to come and speak to the council before we close the public hearing and have a discussion here on this item? No one? All right.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Things are open for discussion. Do we have any discussion on this item?
Mr. Olbert? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just going to make the observation that in my prep for this meeting, I had some extensive discussions with Mr. Malpe about the schedule, and was pleased to hear that staff does look for ways to kind of consolidate items as much as they can on these, because one of my worries in looking at this kind of schedule is that we could end up giving the impression to folks that we're in the business of nickel-and-diming people to death. And that's part of, that's just the nature of the variety of services that we offer. But I was pleased to hear that we do stay on, staff does stay on the lookout for those kind of opportunities to merge things. So. And then at some point, I would love to hear my colleagues' reaction to that idea I brought up before about the block parties, and whether it's something we could consider doing in this schedule, or perhaps ask staff to study it and come back to it, or what. But I'd love to hear reaction to that.
Okay. So as we go around the dais, if council members would like to speak to Mark's idea of waiving fees, that'd be good to do.
I'd be in favor of seeing maybe a short staff report on it and see what they come up with. I don't know enough at this point to really make a decision.
Okay. And by the way, that has to do with what he's talking about there, so everybody understands, is the block parties.
Right, right.
Okay. And to be fair to Mr. Olbert, this is, there's been other times where we've discussed fee schedules, and the whole idea of charging for block parties has come up and been discussed extensively. So it's not, you're not the first time to bring this up. Mr. Weissmeyer, anything?
No. Relative to the proposal, I think would depend on the folks in the party, whether they want to discount their dollars relative to how many people and how much it costs. And I'd be willing to listen to a staff report if there's any input for that.
Okay. So I think we have a consensus on that, to at least have the staff take a look at it. So myself, actually, I did have one more question for staff that I wanted to ask before I bring up some issues that I have. And that is, regards the Community Development Department, when was the last time their fees were audited for the number of hours that they spend on projects on average? Because I think that's how these fees are established. Is that correct?
Yes, that's part of the formula, and that's reviewed every year by the staff in the department. Originally, the fee was set by the consulting firm that came in and did do the audit and walked through the equation with the staff.
Okay. Well, yeah, okay.
Deborah Nelson, Planning Manager. Mr. Mayor, we do, every year when we look at these, we've made several adjustments, adding minor fees for projects where we know, say, a use permit, and some use permits, when they come in, we know that it will be at least the average amount that's in the fee schedule, and maybe more than that, and we use the fee schedule. We had, as a practice, recognized that there were some where there was a modification, say, to a use permit or a more minor kind of review, and in the last two years, we've drilled down a little and added additional fees so that we're not overcharging people for our average time. And we are careful to charge fees of the expected time that we intend to spend.
Very good. So I've been thinking long and hard about how to approach this. And I'm going to ask council if they would consider this. First, I'm going to give my case, and then I am going to ask for a consideration of something, I think, just by consensus here. What I find, especially in recent years, is that, you know, because I'm, just for the sake of the public, I'm in this business. I'm in the home design business. And so I deal with these fees on behalf of clients. And what I'm finding is, on projects these days, clients want to know ahead of time what they're going to be paying. It used to be, if you managed to secure a meeting at the kitchen table with a husband and wife or, you know, whatever the family unit is, if you managed to get to the kitchen table and sit down and talk to them in the evening about designing, you know, in addition to their home, you had the job. They knew who you were. You're there, they're going to hire you. That's no longer the case in this economy. What happens now is you sit down, you talk with them, and they will say to you, can you give me an idea of how much this is going to cost? Or can you send me some material later that tells me how much this project that I've proposed to you is going to cost? How much it's going to cost to design it? How much it's going to cost to do the construction drawings when that comes about? And what are the city fees going to be? And to the best of my ability, you know, and I deal with cities up and down the peninsula, I try to get a grasp of that. Sometimes I'll call the staff at a city and say, this is what we're thinking of doing. Can you give me a grasp of what your fees are going to be? And it's not always, you know, they're not any more able to do that than I am over a proposed plan, because you don't have anything on paper yet. But that's the market. And there are times, oftentimes, where that's as far as you get, either because they've hired someone who thinks they can do it for less, or they just realize what the costs involved are. They had no idea. You know, a lot of homeowners going into this kind of thing have no idea what they're getting themselves into. And so it just shuts down the project altogether. The other part of this, I can tell you, is that my experience with the city of San Carlos and bringing projects in, is that if I do a major remodel, a second-story addition that's a, you know, fair enough, fair size, that's going to be in the ballpark of $5,000 to $7,500, just for the design work. And then you get into construction drawings and other things later. I'm always a little taken aback, quite frankly, when I bring a project in and plop it on the table, and I've charged my client $5,000, the city's going to charge him $2,000 to $3,000, depending on what we're doing and, you know, what we're going to go through. And the reason it sets me back is because I think of how much time I've spent on that project, you know, sitting down with the client originally, going through it, going out and measuring their house and so forth, all the things you have to do. And the fees the city is charging represents a substantial number of hours that would represent my work. So having said that, I think what I would like to see done here, if the council would agree to it, we obviously don't have any, you know, people from the public here to speak on this issue, from, you know, being that it's a public hearing. But I think it would be interesting to at least reach out to the design and architecture community and find out where the city's fees stand relative to what the architects and designers are charging in this market today. Because like I started out saying, there are times where you sit down with a potential client and give them an idea of what everything's going to cost, and they look at the total package, and they simply don't do the project because it's too expensive. And I think part of that is what they run into when they get to City Hall. And it's not just San Carlos. I don't mean to pick on us, but of course, this hearing is about fees in this city. Because it's not, in my opinion, it's not just what's our hourly rate, what's our average number of hours that we put into a project as city staff, but where are we in the market, and what are we doing to the market relative to our fees? And how does that compare with the effort that, like I said, the designers and architects put into something? So I pick on it because it's something that, you know, I can look through a lot of these fees, and I have no idea what the economy is like in that area. But this particular area is something I'm familiar with, and if the council would be fine with it, I think it would be interesting to have the staff do a survey of some of the architects and designers in the area, and just find out where we are with our fees relative to what is being charged.
Well, through the chair, you know, I was in the business in a different area than yours, and of course, fee... And of course, fee, we always, people would say, why does the house cost so much? And we'd say, well, the government fees, we got the sewer fee, we got the hook up there, we got this, we got that, you know, and we had the same, same mantra. The only, but now being on the other side of the dais, at least the way I think these fees are set up, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Menon Hall or staff, basically, we're just trying to de-cost recovery here. We're not, we're not trying to make any money. So we could go to Belmont and they could charge $5,000, Burlingame, $7,000, Hillsborough, 12, ours are nine. But it doesn't, I mean, it would seem to me that it doesn't really equate to anything because even though we're higher than some or lower than others, that's just the cost of what we, what our overhead is here. And so if we were making money on this, I think, I would agree with you 1,000% on going through this. But I, I don't know what it's going to tell us except that other folks have higher or lower.
You end up getting these inflated burdens on it. But those, it's almost like those are the kind of questions I, in addition to that information you're talking about, I'd like to see from staff is, are there creative or different ways that we could be meeting the public safety and other types of requirements that we've set forth as a city that we want the community to follow in a more efficient manner? Which would, you know, if there are such ways of doing that, that would have a tendency to drive down that overhead burden.
Well, I'm completely out of my area here. I guess the only question I have is that are most of the fees that we charge, are, are most of them state or county mandated that, that it's part of the code?
Yeah.
So they have to be there, right? And, and if they have to be there, then we have to cover our cost. I, I don't really know what the fix is for it, but I would, I'd encourage you, if you've got a way to, that you want to approach this or attack it, work with staff and figure out, give them, you know, all the input that you can. I'm, as I say, I'm, I'm completely out of my area in the insurance world. We don't deal with this.
Yeah.
You just charge whatever you want in the insurance world, that's the problem.
I'm just the middleman in the insurance.
I think to the comments of, of the council here, I, my response is that primarily the area that I'm focused on is, is when you're dealing with planning issues and not, not so much building. To me, when I, when I look at it, building seems to be in line. What seems to be out of line in my experience is planning. And so to Mr. Olbert's comments, I suppose if we did such a survey and we found that we're relatively high up and down the line with the different customers who come into us and submit projects, if our costs are, you know, what I'm experiencing, which is on the order of 30 to 40%, maybe there's something that we're doing that we don't need to be doing, that we could cut down the cost by, and reduce the hours and what we have to charge for these, these projects. I don't know, but I think that would be an interesting thing to take a look at, especially if it, if the, if we were to do such a survey of a few firms and find out that we're indeed pretty high on our costs. If the council's interested in that, I, I certainly would, would like to know more about it. I only know from my own experience what I'm seeing and it's always been curious to me.
Through the chair, could we perhaps ask staff to think about what it would take to do the type of survey you're talking about and what kind of follow-on work they'd like to do and then make the assessment? I mean, if, again, if it's, if it's not significant, I think it's a reasonable thing to look at.
Could we have consensus on that, just as a starter? Okay. Take a look at it, yes. All right. So do you understand the, the thing we're discussing?
Well, I mean, I think I understand the direction because I do actually think that this is a very significant project. This isn't just a, something that we're going to run out and do at the staff level. This will likely require us to hire a consultant, have a full-blown process to...
I don't think we would be looking for that. I think if, it's something we could do internal, but...
Yeah, I'm not sure how, I mean, the variables here that just come to mind while you're discussing are quite enormous, including the size of projects. I would assume that the smaller the project, the more inefficient it is in terms of to design and review.
What Mr. Olbert is saying.
So that's going to be a major factor. And, you know, we're going to, we're going to need to collect this data essentially from a third party, a private third party who, you know, may, you know, depending on your point, their point of view, may or may not have different incentives. And we may need to, you know, we may, and then we, we have nothing to benchmark it with outside the community to know, how does that relate regionally? It does seem fairly complex. You know, the thing that resonates in my mind as you're discussing this is our costs are fixed. I mean, our costs are our costs. And if we're going to recover our costs, really, we're talking more about are there efficiencies? And that's a different issue. As part of the budget package that we presented, we had a reorganization of planning that the council partially approved and chose not to approve a, a different component, which would have saved additional money, which would have translated down the road into lowering fee costs because the, the cost of the service is less. But the biggest component to this that comes to mind when we talk about what do we not have to do? We don't have to process these applications very quickly. That's what we don't have to do. And the biggest difference in my experience when you look up and down the peninsula is how long does it take to get an application processed? Here, many applications are turned around. In fact, you know, hats off to the planning staff, building staff and public work staff that, applications get processed in this town, sometimes in the same day and often in, very often in the same week for smaller projects. I could name several communities right now that might take you more than a month to get a permit just to build a deck. And that's just not how we operate. So it would really be, you know, could we lower the cost and could we lower those fees? Definitely. But it would have a pretty significant impact on the service that would be provided to the applicants and the design and architectural community. Now, that we could, that we could, we could begin to tackle and bring you back a report on. The other one, I think we're going to have to do some noodling on, and I really don't think we could get you much without bringing in somebody who could help us acquire this data because you're talking about so much new raw data that we just, we don't have here.
Why don't we leave it at this point that, Mr. Malpe, if you would speak to your community development staff and, and review this discussion and see what you might want to report back to us? Is that fair enough, council?
You bet.
Very good. Okay. All right. Any other discussion on the fee schedule?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to, is it adopt, I guess? Adopt Resolution Number 2012 dash...
Twenty-eight.
I'm sorry?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. Resolution of the City Council, the city of San Carlos authorizing amendments to fee schedule for certain city services.
Through the chair?
Yes, sir.
Can somebody remind me where we left my proposal request?
Oh, that's correct.
Sorry, didn't mean to...
I believe on that, we also had a consensus that, that could be...
Study and bring back...
That the staff could study that and bring it back.
And that doesn't need to be part of the resolution. That's fine.
No, does not.
Sorry, Mr. Gasilli.
And I'll second. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Gasilli and a second by Mr. Collins. Roll call.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Gasilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grocott?
Yes. I believe that brings us to item 10A, if I'm following our altered agenda here correctly. The vice mayor's not saying anything, so I must be on track here. Okay, item 10A is consideration of adopting a 20-year civic facilities master plan. And I think we have a consultant here for this one. Is that right?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
And Mr. Long.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for indulging us while we get the presentation set up. As you may recall, this was part, a facilities master plan was part of an objective that was identified in the strategic planning session held August 29th, 2011. And I'm pleased to say that we used Creakin-D'Angelo as a consultant to take a look at all of our facilities, make, make recommendations on a 20-year plan. This plan will help guide our capital improvement projects budget for years to come. It identifies certain areas that we need to deal with immediately, within five years and over the next 10 to 20 years. It also has a preliminary budget that identifies the cost of completing some of these items that have been identified as part of the project. But I would like to introduce Reinhard Lutke, who has been instrumental in putting this together, and he will present a PowerPoint presentation, after which we'll be here to answer any of your questions you may have.
Thanks, Doug. As Doug said, my name's Reinhard Lutke. I'm a civil engineer, a structural engineer with the Creakin-D'Angelo Engineers. We interviewed for this project several months ago, maybe half a year ago. And Creakin-D'Angelo was the lead on this project. I'm going to talk very briefly about the project team, the facilities that were included in the master plan, the review process, ranking of priorities, identifying the things that are recommended that the city does in order to maintain and repair these facilities. We prepared a ranking of priorities for the facilities. We looked at green and sustainable alternatives for the facilities based on the request from the city manager and from Doug. We prepared recommendations and cost estimates. And then there was a supplemental report that we were asked to prepare related to City Hall relocation. I'll talk about that. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. First, how would you like me to address you? Is Ryan or...
Reinhard.
Reinhard.
R-E, Reinhard is...
Okay, Mr. Reinhard. Very good.
Not Mr. Reinhard, my first name is Reinhard.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Reinhard. Okay. Before you get started, I just, there's a lot of material here and I just wanted to find out from the council if there's anything that they would like you to highlight, especially as you go through, because, you know, like I said, there's a lot of material there and we can't hit on all of it, obviously. But if there's anything that the council is curious about or would like you to especially highlight, I want to make sure that you hear what that is.
Okay.
So let's go down the line here. Anything in particular?
I wouldn't mind getting some insight into what, what's the context for the situation that we're in. I mean, on the one hand, I know a big part of it is that we were looking to defer maintenance expenses as, as much as we could. But if there are issues other than that, that one I know, if there are issues other than that about process or management or whatnot, I'd, I'd be interested in hearing that.
Okay. Anything else?
Mr. Collins?
It's so big, it just boggles the mind. What I'm looking for, obviously, is, are the priorities, and I think you've done that. And so I'll, I'll be curious to see how those priorities break out. But as you go through, there's, there's little things in there, certain projects that I'm going to ask you questions about. And I'm going to, I think I want to wait until I see how, you know, how those go.
Okay.
If you may answer some of my questions in the course of your comments.
And I'm good, and I think the vice mayor's good. So Karen?
My, my plan was to just give you an overview, five, 10 minutes maximum, an overview. Then if there's specific things you have more interest in, then we'll, we'll cover those questions or specific projects that we were involved in, I'll answer those questions. The project team included Creakin-D'Angelo Engineers. We do both civil and structural engineering and long-range planning. Avalar Associates was the architects. We had three or four different architects that were involved in the projects, especially in the field reviews. Mechanical and electrical evaluation was done by YEI engineers. They do both mechanical engineering and electrical engineering. And they're both involved, especially YEI is involved in many, many assessments like this for public agencies and government agencies, federal government. They do a lot of these types of evaluations and condition reports for many, many large organizations. We met with Doug and with, with city staff and with maintenance. We looked at 22 city-owned facilities at 15 unique sites. The list is here. I won't go through the entire list, but includes this building, the campus around this building, including the library and the senior facility. We looked at all the parks buildings. We looked at the corporation yard. In fact, the corporation yard was the first project that we looked at to kind of get the process and procedure nailed down for the overall project. The project process, the first thing was we, we gathered all of the drawings and records that the city had on the buildings. We reviewed those drawings and records so we could kind of focus our attention. The attention was focused, you know, there was a different focus for the architects and the mechanical, electrical and the structural engineers. The architects looked at the building envelope, the glazing, the fenestrations, the roofing and the finishes. Doug was particularly interested in, the city's particularly interested in like the service life remaining in the roofing, for example. And so that was addressed in our assessment. Structural, we looked at the structural systems, the foundations, the load path. We did, we did consider seismic performance, especially, that was especially true for some of the older buildings where we felt that they were, if they needed a seismic assessment or potentially were a, had a, a high seismic risk that was identified in the report. Mechanical looked at the equipment, the age of the equipment, the operation of the equipment. They also looked at the energy use of the equipment. There is a green and sustainable component in the, in the report. So we're looking at if the equipment needs to be replaced, is there something that's more efficient and better to install in the future or, or short term? Electrical looked at power and lighting and telecommunications and fire and life safety issues. And again, the green and sustainable and more energy efficient lighting and electrical controls was also something that was considered in the report. And then the evaluation. To, this is mentioning the, we'll talk about our recommendations metric. Short-term, the short-term recommendations, which I think in, in the table and in the recommendations that we put together for the costs, something fell into the short-term category. If it was an immediate life safety issue, if there were some electrical components, elements that were, we considered life safety issues just because of the way they were installed, that there weren't covers, things that should be addressed immediately, or if there were code violations, if we knew that there were code violations based on our observations. Some of these things were relatively minor. Some of these things were, in conversations with, with Doug and the city manager, they might even be able to be done by city maintenance staff. That still needs to be determined, how those, how our recommendations get implemented. If a, some observation we felt impacted existing structure and components, if we saw something that was leaking or we saw water damage, and if it was, if it was not maintained or not repaired, that was going to cost, cost the city more in the long term, then that particular item was put into the short-term recommendations. Maintenance, routine upkeep and scheduled repairs, that was identified for maintenance issues. Long-term issues were identified that we just forecast the costs and the scope of projected repairs and replacement at the end of anticipated service life. So some of those long-term items for different buildings were identified based on what we felt was the expected service life and when the city was going to have to address those issues and how much that might cost, when the city did address those issues. Cost estimates, I will tell you that, and, you know, if two of you from your earlier conversation are involved in the construction industry or have been involved in the construction industry, estimating costs for existing buildings is challenging. We are involved in it all the time. We did, we, we always try to base our costs on the quantities, you know, and, and if we had more information, we'd, we'd do it based on labor, equipment and, and material. Thanks, Doug. We, we got costs from, you know, we look at unit costs based on current building construction cost indexes and we also reviewed our costs with cost consultants. We, the architectural costs were prepared by Richard Avalon Associates and they, they do that internally. They have a cost estimator internally. They do have a, part of their business is, is involved in litigation, litigation evaluations and litigation support. So they, they do have people that understand what costs are, the costs are. Structure, we have a pretty good handle on structure costs and repair costs and rehabilitation costs. So we feel, feel pretty comfortable with what we, what we put down there. We tended to be a little bit conservative because we want to give you numbers that, you know, the, the purpose of the cost and the purpose of the report is to give you a document that helps guide you towards making decisions for your 20-year capital project plan. So it's not, it's, I would say every one of these, when you decide to select projects, you're going to have to get, have a more refined definition of the project and then we'll refine the cost estimates when you do that definition, whether it's just a specification or whether you do construction documents. But those, those costs will be refined. Mechanical, electrical, we challenge those costs a little bit. I think that, like I just said, I think when, when we get into real projects and we identify, if you're going to change all the light fixtures in City Hall and you start really identifying what they're going to be and how many there are and what kind of labor and equipment costs are associated with it, I think those costs will be refined. But I'm going to stand by the cost that we have in the cost estimate because that's the best we could do with the data and... the best we could do with the data and the information that we had and the time that we had in order to do it. On the green and sustainable, for HVAC, there are some recommendations for some of the buildings. We looked at putting in central air handling units, variable air volume systems, direct digital controls to improve efficiency. Plumbing, we're looking at more efficient fixtures and metered fixtures. Electrical, we looked at high-efficiency lighting and occupancy sensors, so they, the sensors would tell when people are, there's occupancy in a room, so they could turn on, they turn the power on and off, so that would be an opportunity to save energy and reduce costs to the city. Now, the facilities master plan, we prepared and submitted two reports, two documents. The project report has a specific description of each building, what we did, what we found, and what our recommendations are, and that's in the project, volume one report. The volume two report was the same list of buildings, same facilities, but this is the detailed cost estimate. So there's a lot of information, like you said, in these reports. I can try to answer the questions about them. I mean, I wasn't the person that was involved in doing all the field work and writing all the reports. There was a, you know, team of six or seven or eight people, so I'll be, try to answer the questions if you do have specific questions. On the corp yard building, we said, no, sealed concrete, tilt-up walls, repair windows, replace the roof. On the Quanis Building, which was in the park, we thought there was some pretty serious electrical system deficiencies, maybe even the service in the building, the grounding, the switching upgrades were required. I think that was based on staff interviews. We interviewed staff on all the buildings, got their input on what they had, what the history of that building was and what the challenges were that they saw with that. Fire Station 16, that fire station should have a seismic upgrade. I think that's an essential facility, and we would highly recommend that that building be upgraded or a new facility built. City Hall, I know the report says replace windows, replace electrical switchboard. The senior center, I think our report says that that HVAC system is nearing the end of its life, and it's going to be time to replace the HVAC system in that building pretty soon. I mentioned in master plan, table one has all the facility recommendations. This is just a very global summary of costs, which is in this report here. The short-term costs that we came up with are about $4.5 million, $4.6 million for all 22 facilities. Long-term costs, we had $6.7, $6.7 million. So total cost for the 20-year civic facilities master plan is $12.2 million. And if you look at the details of the cost estimates, and I'll just flip to one here. Let's see what we got.
While you're flipping, would that 2.6 be added to the 12.2 if we do green and sustainable?
Uh, no.
Okay.
No.
So there's?
I think that's, you know, once, if you decided to go down that path and make things more green and sustainable, that probably would replace some of the projects that are listed.
Okay.
Under the long term.
Okay, thanks.
You know, I'm trying to, what I was looking at is what kind of, you know, we usually do a construction cost estimate, then we sometimes have a contingency on the cost estimate, we put in soft costs. I was trying to see what we had in there. So I'd have, if there was, if there was a question about that, I'd have to go back into our calculations and see what, how we generated those costs, but I'm pretty sure that there's, that there's hard costs and soft costs in those costs that I just showed you. Now, the City Hall relocation, I think I said, we were asked to do this supplemental report, which we prepared, and just in general, we came up with a property acquisition cost of $7.2 million to have, I think, a three, four, three or four acre parcel on the east side of town. That was based on some information that we got from staff, or some people on staff, based on recent real estate transactions in the city. The hard construction costs or the project construction costs, again, which includes, I think, the hard costs and soft costs, the engineering design and construction costs, we estimated about $22.4 million. Total projected cost of $28.6 million. I can tell you, on that one, we did consult with a cost estimator that wasn't, isn't listed, that wasn't paid, but somebody that we worked with a lot, Langdon Adamson, and I said, what do you see for civic facilities of this type? What kind of, you know, cost per square foot? When we came up with, around $600 a square foot, and he agreed that that's a realistic number for constructing a new City Hall facility like this, as the architect would know, designers would know, that there's a, there's a big variable depending on what the finishes are and things like that, what you put in the building, but I think these are also good numbers. So that's the end of my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Very good, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Questions?
I just had a quick question.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
For staff.
Out of the box.
Have we incorporated the short-term, or should I say the immediate costs? Not so much the short-term, because some of those are over five years. The immediate costs in this year's capital budget?
Combination of incorporation into the capital budget as well as the operating budget.
Okay, so we've addressed, what's in this thing we've addressed in our, in our budget for next year?
I think we've got, well, most of the immediate over the next couple of years.
Okay.
In the capital budget.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of questions.
Okay.
One, I was curious, and I understand that cost estimating is always, challenging is an excellent word. Do you ever, have you ever had an opportunity to, since obviously the consulting work that you do often translates into people actually doing the actual work, have you ever had anybody go back and look to see how the estimates compared to what their actual experience was?
All the time.
And?
Every time.
Reasonably, you use that as part of your process to update your estimating?
Yes.
Okay. The other question I had, as I mentioned before you started your overview presentation, in addition to the, obviously, the financial aspects of this, I would love to hear if there's any advice or recommendations that you would have for us of a management process oversight, how we deal with stuff in this, in this domain. I'd love to get that perspective as well. Are there things that we could be doing better?
Things you could be doing better? Maintenance, you know, I think, you know, allocating a budget annually for maintenance, I think that's probably, everybody could do that better from my, from our observation. I think that's, that's the primary thing, is that if you maintain the, certainly the building envelope, you see problems. I don't, I don't, I don't know the maintenance operations side of the, you know, the city's operation, like what your budget is or what they're allocated. I mean, the people that we dealt with seem to be very, very, very knowledgeable about the facilities, about the problems with the facilities. I don't, you know, I wasn't the guy that was on the ground here doing the inspections, so I don't know what the, those folks told the inspectors, but, you know, I think a lot of times it boils down to, you know, staff and resources, there's only so much that they can do, so you can only do so much. But I think having a document, I think, I commend the city for preparing a document like this, because it gives you the roadmap to make, you know, educated decisions, have decisions based on facts, and I think that's the way you should, you should make your decisions.
Okay, good. Glad to hear that. I guess I'll just make the comment to the city manager that if we haven't already, perhaps debriefing some of the people who are doing the actual work and whatnot about practices and whatnot. If there is anything we can learn, I mean, this is always a good time to do that. The, and I'll just point out, without meaning to embarrass either Paul or Guy, there certainly are multiple levels of irony with the maintenance issues at the corp yard. I would be, and I suspect, knowing both of those gentlemen a little bit, I suspect that that one was a purely financial constraint, that if we could get them more money, they probably would be dealing with those problems. So, thank you.
It's a little bit like the cow burrs sun.
Yes, exactly.
Doesn't have the shoes.
Right.
Okay, over here to Mr. Collins.
Just a couple of questions. First of all, the numbers that are up there, are those today's dollars, inflation adjusted? How do we, I mean, we're looking ahead 20 years, so how do we evaluate?
I think, I think the short-term costs are today's dollars, and I think there is an escalation in the long-term costs.
The report shows an escalation, Ron.
Right.
Of all the costs.
Yeah.
Approximately, I think, 3%, 2 or 3, 3%.
3%. But on the City Hall project, I think that was?
Current dollar.
Yeah, more current, is it?
On the?
On the City Hall project itself, this particular thing was more current.
Those are current dollars, yeah, there was no escalation included in that project. I just assumed that was going to be something that you would consider in the next two or three years.
Right.
To proceed with a project like that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Very good. Mr. Griselli?
No.
Nothing?
It's voluminous and, the only question I, as we're doing, you know, we're hopefully going to get jumping on the immediate stuff and then try to figure out how to pay for the other stuff.
Okay. Well, the mayor has a few questions.
Please.
Please, okay. The first one I had was, first off, I want to commend you for the report. It was, maybe I'm a little sick, but I sat down and spent a whole afternoon going through this and looking through it and seeing the pictures.
That makes me happy. Somebody read it.
I did, I read it, all, every page. And it's very thorough. The, the question I had, though, after looking through it, is, it's very detailed, and I think part of the thing that we were also looking for is, you know, how to approach our facilities. This, this, the reason we did this was a while ago, we had a, at one of the council retreats, it came up about, you know, what's the status of our facilities? What kind of money should we be putting aside to put into maintenance? Maybe there's something that's blindsiding us that we're not seeing. And then also, to be able to think big once in a while about things like, you know, maybe City Hall has reached the end of its life, and we should be thinking about either, you know, how do you do that? Do you tear it down where it is and rebuild it where it is? Or do you, do you decide on a new location so that while you're constructing, planning it and constructing it and doing all that, you still have a place that you're operating? And then once that's done, you sell the property? You know, how do you, how do you do these things? And eventually, they have to be done. I mean, some kind of plan has to be there to do those kinds of things. So my question is, kind of on the big picture, first off, was there any building that you guys looked at and said, you know, this is like that, you know, '72 Corolla, that the transmission needs replacing, the brakes are bad, why don't you just get rid of the thing and buy a new Corolla? As opposed to doing all this maintenance and, you know, you're so far, you know, the old Corolla has a tape deck instead of a CD player, so your technology's way out of whack, and, you know, all these kind of things. Was there any kind of building that you looked at and just said, yeah, you've got these problems, and you can see what they are, and you could maintain them, and you could bring them up to snuff, but you're still going to be way behind the times with this building? Why are you even fussing with this building? Just mow the thing down and start over again?
I, the answer is yes. We had those kind of conversations and had, that thought process was included in the deliberation. The two buildings that come to mind right off the bat are the Burton Park Adobe Building. That building is, would be expensive to maintain, to extend its life, but there's questions about, is it historic? Is it an asset for the community? So there are lots of variables that need to be considered. It's a small building. We thought, you know, and I think sometimes those things are subjective and depends on the community. So I think that's something that's, that planning and the community and the council should consider.
And there's a couple of ladies in town whose ears just perked up.
And so I hear them and I know those ladies. I don't, haven't met them personally straight, but I know they're here. They're here, they're everywhere. So I think you want to, I think that one deserves some attention, deliberation, and I mean, it's, you know, you can always use it for storage, and it's a nice little building, and I think there's lots of people that would probably want to save it, maybe, you know, restore some of the damages that has occurred there. So that's number one. I think the fire station that I mentioned, fire stations are really important assets to the city, and they're essential facilities, and they should be treated differently. I think they should be considered differently, and it looked to us like Fire Station 16 had not been upgraded, had some seismic deficiencies. That's, you know, like even City Hall, I mean, if you, if you start looking at, what should I do about this problem? I think that's a bigger, that requires a separate study, because of the variables involved, and there's, there's many different, different variables, including the fire department, how they operate, you know, where it's located, you know, the cost to, even operations to, if you tore it down and left it in the same place, what is, what do you, how do you operate the fire department and respond to emergencies, you know, while it's going on? So I think that deserves a separate study. But that may be, I mean, this may generate some separate individual studies. The same thing with City Hall. City Hall definitely deserves a bigger study, because when I was talking with Doug about it, I said, what's in City Hall now? And I think the fact that police department's here, and the police department's got things going on in the basement, and they store their cars, and maybe you don't want to have the police department on the other side of town, because you want to operate from the central part of town. I don't know those kinds of things, but I think those are bigger questions that should be included in a more, a feasibility study and a planning study. And I wouldn't make decisions based on the study that I did.
I was, if I can follow up then, on, just on City Hall, because it seemed to indicate in the report that if we maintain it, we could get another 50 years out of it. I was a little surprised by that, because, you know, I don't do this full-time, but my take on civic buildings is that generally, they last about 50 to 60 years, and then they've reached their life, you might as well, you know, get rid of them or tear them down and rebuild them or whatever. But after about 50, 60 years, at least in the United States of America, unlike England, where buildings seem to last for thousands of years, here in America, we tear them down and build new ones.
Or we call them historical.
Or we call them historical Adobe buildings.
Yeah. I mean, I don't have facts to break, to back up my point of view, but we just celebrated the 75th anniversary of the Golden Gate Bridge. We're painting it all the time. And I think people would love to have that thing last 200 years at least, right? Because they don't want to see, you know, to have to spend the money to replace it. I think there's lots of buildings that can last a long time. I think, you know, this building, I think, it's a concrete building, as long as you keep the envelope weather tight and keep the water out of it, I think can last 100 years, 150 years, it could last a long, long, long time. I think you just have to, you know, maintain the envelope. I think the weather's what's going to force you out of this place, or functionally doesn't work any longer. That's my, my point of view. I think maybe a timber building might be different if it gets, has, you know, some sort of rot or insect infestation or something like that, but a steel building or this building, it could last a long time. You know, I think the design life, when we're designing it, architects, engineers, we say 50, 60, 70 years is the design life, but they're well-maintained. There's many buildings that provide service a lot longer than that, and they all become historic after 40 years or 50 years.
I guess we should go back to the fee schedule, and consider a toll booth at the entrances to this building.
Yes.
Referring to the bridge.
Roofing, exactly.
Right. My next question is how to use the report. I think it's a, you know, it might seem obvious how to use the report. It reminds me of just a little exposure of my life. When I was in college, I worked for a while for an apartment complex, and, you know, every day you show up at work and they give you the slips that look like these things, and you go around and you change carpet and paint and so forth. And I suppose that's how this could be used, but sort of a two-part question, is there other ways that we might use this? Number one, and number two, is this in some kind of format that we can amend it as time goes on and add to it, that our staff can use it and say, well, we, we had this on the list, but we need to add this? Or we had a storm and there was some damage to the, you know, certain facility, and we need to add it to the list that's already going on here?
I think, I think the answer is yes. Matter of if the format is exactly what staff needs, what the city manager needs, or facilities director needs, but I would think, and I think we were talking about that, is that when things come off the list, or you make decisions about, I know we talked about, maybe there's some of these things that maintenance can do, so they come off the list as far as projects that may require construction documents in the future, or a larger project in the future. But then, as other things are identified, that might not have been on the list, that you added to the list, so you have a living document, and it evolves. It probably, certainly would deserve another look, maybe even five years. Certainly at 10 years, I think you want to take a look and say, and I think annually, I would say annually, annually, you want to have that, that list, that matrix, and say, what have I accomplished? If you have, if you have a plan, like if Matt and Doug put together a plan, and I would say, you guys would say, okay, let's take a look, and how'd you do? Let's audit that plan, have you accomplished what you just set out to do? And then, you know, you've got deferred projects that maybe you need to prioritize, or make sure you, you know, just keep the feet to the fire sort of thing, so.
But again, this particular document is not in a format that we can amend it. We'll have to create that matrix, I guess.
Um, I mean, there's, excuse me, there is a matrix in here.
Oh, okay.
I think, I think you can.
All right, very good. All right, very good. Good to know. Okay.
That was, that was the intent. That's something that can be used by staff to manage the process. And if they, and if it's not exactly what Doug and, and the city manager need, then we can work together to create that.
Very good. Okay, thank you. Uh, I guess that's it for me. I hear Mr. Collins wants to ask another question.
I, you got talking about the Adobe building and that caught my eye particularly. And I apologize, this may sound like a really dangerous question to ask, but if that building didn't have historical status, what would be your recommendation to do with it?
My recommendation? Keep it. Maintain it. Because I like it. That's, that's, that's subjective. That's personal.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so I think that's sometimes the way these things boil down is that some people think it's worth protecting, worth saving. Uh, I think, you know, I would turn it into a project. You could even turn it into a community project. Uh, if there's people like, you know, like-minded, and I, I think that there are, uh, then, uh, then I would say it's worth saving. I don't know what you, I don't know what the occupancy would, is, uh, even if it's just a storage building for the park. I think it's a, you know, interesting little building with historical significance. So I, I would raise my hand and say, let's, let's see, let's protect it, let's save it, let's figure out what we can do. It may not last another 100 years because of the material, but...
Do we know what that building was historically? Was it...
It's a restroom.
A what? A restroom?
Restroom. I think there were showers in it too.
Okay.
It was when I, it was a restroom when I was a kid.
Okay. So we don't want to set it up as a historical place to go and look and like Abe Lincoln was born there or anything like that because, uh...
No, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it has historical status, does it not?
Yes.
Okay, so there's really, we can't tear it down or, all we can do is, is renovate it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
And we have another question down here too.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, one of the things I forgot to ask you before, when I was reading your report, um, prepping for the meeting, I came across some instances of some things where, uh, to my inexperienced eye, it, it looked to me like, hmm, it's odd that that element of this building is suffering from difficulties because it's not that old. And specifically what I'm thinking of is there were a couple of items with the library. I know there's one item in the library with the HVAC system, which I don't remember if, I think you addressed in here, but I'm familiar with from the capital budget. Um, and, um, some items at the youth center as well. Uh, did you see anything in here that caught your eye on the level of, gee, that looks like it was not built right or not done right? Uh, either we should learn from that when we do our next building or we can maybe think about going back to the contractor and saying, this didn't last as long as it was supposed to. But sort of an open-ended question. I'd like to get your perspective on some...
If I may tag on to that, or a recommendation to modify the design so that it will, uh, maintain itself longer?
Um, you know, I'm not, uh, as familiar with you as you are with that specific, uh, component or problem. I don't think that there were things that, uh, that YI said, oh my God, I can't believe that this was installed or built this way, or, you know, it was so far out of code compliance, I don't know what people were thinking when that happened. I don't think there was issues like that that we came up with. There might've been a few little things that, uh, the details of construction or components that were missing, but who knows if they were, you know, taken off and removed, uh, after it was built? Uh, I'd have to take a look at the, um, specifics and ask YI if there's some things that they saw. But I didn't hear anything like that, that there were any, um, deficiencies or things that were that far off of code compliance, that there seemed to be something that was done wrong.
Okay.
I, I think it's, you know, I'd just say as long as the code is enforced, you know, with the, uh, any new facilities, I think you should probably be in pretty good shape.
You know, there, I did provide some of that information to Mr. Malpey and I found some other ones after I sent that to him, so I'll send that to him as well. I, I personally would just appreciate staff at least looking at that to see whether there is anything here that we should do of any of those things that I or you suggested, so.
Very good. And, uh, I have a question. I'm not sure if, if it's for staff or for you as a consultant, but just looking at adopting this as a 20-year plan, if you could give us a little guidance on, you know, if we vote that way, what, what exactly it is we're committing to?
Sure, um, I'd be happy to do that. This, this is a master plan, so you're actually not, you're not committing to any of these projects or what the ultimate outcomes will be or what year things will actually be replaced. This is really a, a guiding document. It's a staff document, if you will. Uh, you're, by adopting it, you're, this is a situation where you're essentially just accepting the report. We're going to use it at the staff level to inform our, our recommendations to the council on future, uh, capital, uh, projects that we recommend, uh, to use it as a starting point, a guiding document to help us, uh, set some priorities in terms of how we're spending our operating maintenance dollars and what we can prioritize moving forward. And, you know, while the document looks out 20 years, I mean, my, my suggestion, recommendation that, you know, every 10 years the document at, at least be refreshed and updated because, you know, I can just about guarantee you that, you know, next winter we'll have a roof leak that's not identified as, you know, a high priority right now. It'll be a high priority next winter when, when we start to, uh, try to respond to water damage, so. It's really, uh, meant to be a document, sort of a state of the facilities. Uh, we, we know, having been around the facilities, uh, in the city for the last 10 years, as we've been dealing with some pretty significant budget issues, that one of the first things that went was maintenance and capital money. And, you know, we've seen some of those effects. Uh, for example, when you're talking about this building, a building that I'm very familiar with, that I've been working with for, in for, uh, over the last 10 years, you know, we've seen this building change. And when we talk about the envelope, of course, you're concerned about the foundation and the footings as well as the roof. Well, you know, for many years that I worked here, I never saw water penetrate this building. And for the last several years in certain areas, water has begun to penetrate the bill, building. And if we don't respond to those kinds of issues, the building is certainly not going to last 150 years. If we do, um, you know, it, it may, and to the tune of, you know, many, many millions of dollars, so. Uh, it's a document, it, you know, many of these master plans kind of get put on a shelf. I think this, this one is going to be one that's well-loved and, and well-worn by the staff, uh, both in Parks and Recreation, Public Works, as they go about maintaining the facilities.
And then one other question, uh, like I had started with my comments, one of the reasons we got going on this is because we wanted to think strategically, both about our money situation and capital improvement projects related to our facilities, but also there were some big ideas that were being bounced around. One of them we haven't even talked about under this tonight was Mr. Royce's idea regarding the corp yard. Uh, so what might staff expect from us tonight in direction on corp yard, uh, the City Hall idea? Uh, he, the consultant has mentioned Fire Station 16, uh, which I suspected you would say. So I agree with you there. And also I think, uh, you know, we've talked a little bit about the Adobe building. Might we look at, uh, possibly not tonight, but at some point, making some kind of resolution that we're going to, you know, protect the Adobe building or is it even necessary? So all of those things, is there any direction that staff needs?
Sure. On most of those items, there's really, I don't think there's any action that needs to be taken tonight, certainly on, uh, City Hall or in terms of replacing City Hall. I don't think that that's something that the council's actively talking about or planning for, uh, today. In terms of the corporation yard, we are talking, we're continuing to talk with several other jurisdictions and districts about possibly sharing a corporation yard. That's really a process that's happening simultaneously but independently of this process, which obviously if we ended up sharing a separate facility, then, you know, that, all the issues and recommendations identified in this report may go away. And, uh, the final one was the fire station, and that's another area where, uh, you know, we're talking to several jurisdictions about possibly, uh, consolidating, uh, Station 16 with several other fire stations in the next few years and building a brand-new facility, which would, uh, obviously address the, the issues that we've got, the maintenance issues out there. So there are some things that are happening independent of this document that are going to continue to move forward on their own path that would have a significant impact on what's in here, but I don't think the council needs to take any action tonight.
Okay, so all you're looking for here tonight is to accept the document and approve a 20-year master plan? Very good. Mr. Olbert?
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor. Um, I did think actually, uh, for what it's worth, I actually wouldn't mind seeing staff spend some time thinking about and perhaps bringing back some proposals to us on, uh, the Adobe about, I particularly like the idea of potentially making it a community project. Um, uh, and there may be other things that we might do as well. That was one that, you know, as you, Mr. Malpey just mentioned, the fire station's being studied for other reasons. This Adobe is not going to be studied for other reasons. And, uh, while it's not a big thing, I wouldn't mind having staff provide a little feedback for us on, maybe there is some way we can get it taken care of.
Is there consensus on that? We, I don't think it's anything we should vote on, but...
No, that's right.
Yeah.
I, I would agree.
I would as well. Okay, very good. Vice Mayor?
The Adobe's, the Adobe, uh, it's not going anywhere.
No, it's not, but if, if...
You know, it's going to be there forever. And you and I are dead and gone.
I think what Mr. Olbert is speaking of...
It might slowly decay back into the ground.
For example, there, you know, we might do a program of, you know, Friends of the Adobe, right, to help us, uh, pay for the maintenance of it and people who might want to volunteer maintenance, uh, work on the, on the building and so forth. So, good idea. Okay, thank you very much. It's a very good presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to, uh, adopt the, uh, 20-year civic facilities master plan?
Second.
Okay, the Vice Mayor, uh, moved. Uh, Mr. Olbert, second. Roll call?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grocott?
Yes.
Brings us, I believe, to item 10B, which is, uh, it is recommended that the city council introduce the new section 5.40 of the municipal code regarding massage therapy regulations for therapists and establishments within the city of San Carlos. Mr. Rubens, city attorney?
Mr. Mayor, council members, uh, this might look a little familiar. Uh, last year, um, the council passed a moratorium on massage establishments that will expire this July. Um, I've developed this revised ordinance to update, um, the ordinance, um, to take into account some changes in state law and to make it conform more closely to the recently enacted, uh, massage therapy ordinance in the county of San Mateo, um, as reported previously last year. That was, those were the two reasons that we, uh, are two of the reasons we placed the moratorium in, in effect. Um, moratoriums do have an expiration date, so that's why we're bringing it to you tonight. So it will be, this, this ordinance, um, if introduced and adopted, would take effect the same day that the, um, that, that the moratorium would expire. Um, so I'm available for any questions. Uh, the, uh, I did talk with the massage therapy council and shared a copy with, of this proposed ordinance with them a month ago and made a few changes based on their suggestions that seemed reasonable. And, uh, and, uh, I've talked with the head of the massage therapy council today and, and they informed me that they're in support of, um, this proposed ordinance.
Okay, very good. Questions from council members? Mr. Collins?
Just a curiosity, Mr. Rubens. It seems to me that the massage therapy council has, has pursued this because there, there's a, a feeling that they've sort of been unfairly branded over the years. And, I mean, we all know that there's basically two kinds of massage, so it seems to me that, that this was, the genesis of this was the, um, sort of the illegitimate, uh, establishments that, um, caused a, a lot of issues for the legitimate ones. Is that, is that a fair way to characterize it?
I, I think that is. Um, that was one of the reasons also for the moratorium last year, that there was some secondary effects, um, and some enforcement involving some massage therapy businesses, um, not only in San Carlos but in the area. Um, and the, the best way, I mean, this is an area that's been largely preempted by the state, so we're trying to implement an ordinance in the areas that local governments still have some authority and that's, that's the basis for, for this ordinance and the way it's worded. It, it provides San Carlos and our local officials, the sheriff, um, and our building officials with, uh, about the maximum local authority that we, that we can impose on these types of businesses. One of the issues, um, Council, uh, Councilmember Collins, uh, is in the law is that massage therapy businesses cannot be treated differently than other professional service businesses. Uh, and you'll see that, um, throughout the, the ordinance. Um, the, uh, and I think that's to create a, a level playing field so that, for instance, if a doctor or a engineer or other professional that's licensed by the state is allowed in a particular zoning district or in a particular area of town, that this, a massage therapy business would have to be allowed. It also has this, you might recall, basically now there's this massage therapy council that, um, is charged with regulating massage therapists and certifying them. Uh, and this ordinance and the county, um, ordinance now allows only those with those, the, the statewide certificate that's issued by the, by the massage therapy council. And I might add that one of the changes in state law was to strengthen the council's ability to revoke, um, permits, uh, that, that have been issued for improper conduct. Um, and, and there is a little bit of a change in local control that allows us to, um, to facilitate that process, so.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mr. Rubens, uh, just a, a couple of observations and questions. On page eight, uh, 5.40040H, right above 40050, um, there's several places in here where, uh, certified massage practitioners, all lowercase, is kind of used as a, almost as a defined term. And I just wanted to ask whether it's something that ought to be a defined term? So it's, it's consistent throughout that we, we mean a massage therapist who holds a certification as defined? Um, I think in one of the earlier clauses, it talks about the particular council that issues the certifications. C A M T C?
Yeah, we, um, you know, between now when you introduce and, uh, those, those would, I would say, um, would be considered sort of clerical corrections that I can make between now and when you adopt. If, um, I, I thought I caught all those, uh, those types of, um, issues in the, in the ordinance when I reviewed it, but if there's a place where something should be, um, use, use the definition of massage practitioner instead of massage therapist, then, then I could certainly make that change.
I, I will leave it in your capable hands to decide whether that's necessary. Now, it's just, I'm, it struck me when I was reading it, some places it's capitalized defined term and some places it's not.
Mr. Olbert, if I may jump in on you, uh, just for a moment, because you're right in the area?
Oh, sure.
In item F, if you read the last sentence, I think it's supposed to say, "in accordance with San Carlos municipal code," and it just says Carlos. And I don't know who Carlos is, so.
Okay.
It's San Carlos.
There's no apostrophe on the end of the, of the S there, so I could catch, Mayor.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Olbert.
Um, let's see. Another question I had is, when I read, uh, on pages 10 and 11, 540 dot 080, health and safety requirements, um, a lot of the thrust of that is clearly to make sure that, that there is a regulatory framework so that, uh, illicit activities can't occur, banning advertising or whatnot. After reading that, it occurred to me, I didn't see anything in here, and maybe it's because you can't do what I'm going to describe, I, I didn't see anything in here that would, uh, uh, make it unlawful to offer referrals. In other words, not advertising materials, but somebody goes to a place and asks and is told, well, you can call this number or whatnot. So, um, I just was curious whether that issue had been thought of and said, well, we can't deal with that this way, or it's already covered someplace else, or...
Well, if I, the, if I'm looking at 5.40.080, it's, um, health and safety requirements, which include time of operations and things of that nature. So I think if I hear your question correctly, you're saying, is there a way we can, um, regulate referring from a massage establishment to another massage establishment?
Or to another establishment?
Yeah, or another establishment. Well...
And by the way, the reason I brought that up is because I, I understand, I think, your point about this is the health and safety sections, but, you know, when you read some of the language within, like, section C, for example, it talks about... of the language within, like, section C, for example, it talks about, you know, "Thou shalt not have printed materials that offers services other than what you're supposed to be offering." That's where I started thinking about this, that it's, it looked to me like it was going a little bit beyond just purely health and safety and sort of saying, "We're trying to restrict how it's being used."
Yeah, that, you know, and I think the short answer to that is, I don't think that's come up as an issue. I can't think of a reason other than perhaps there's a, you know, First Amendment issue regarding being able to comment on other businesses or referring people to other businesses that might have a different legitimate style of massage that might be more appropriate. So, I, those are, it might be hard to construct a way to compare the legitimate referral to some, to a referral to a place that we're trying to prevent from occurring.
Like that famous judicial ruling about, "I may not be able to define obscenity, but I know when I see it." Again, I will leave it in your hands just to decide whether there's anything to think about.
And I think the fact, I mean, that, that may, that may occur, but I think that the types of businesses that we're trying to prevent have a whole different media for doing referrals, and it's on the internet.
That's fair. That's fair. And then I think my last point was, it looked to me, again, I'm in 080, health and safety, it looked to me like the language in clause M, section M as in mark, and section FF as in fantastic four, was a little bit inconsistent. And so, again, I will leave it to you to decide whether or not it needs to be conformed or whether it's fine the way it is.
M and F?
No. M as in mark and then double F.
Double F, okay.
The very last clause. And with that, I'll stop playing war.
There, well, they, they do seem to cover the, FF is a little more specific and... It might be that I could combine the two. I'll look at that.
Again, I, I leave it to you. I'm just pointing it out because I have sometimes on occasion run into issues in other areas of contract. When there's inconsistent language, it ends up opening up things, so, but not always. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor? No questions?
No, I'm not an attorney, so...
Well, I'm not either, but I have some questions.
It has to be to weigh in.
I, I heard that. I heard that, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I did.
And being not an attorney, I want to jump to page 19 first. And there's a clause you use in the middle under civil injunction, create a cause for injunctive relief. And I think I know what that means, and I think I know why it's in there, but I just thought I would ask if you could explain that one.
It's 160?
Yes. 5.40160, right.
Well, that, that would, this, but what this is saying is that not only could, could a violation of the ordinance be prosecuted criminally for, you know, for instance, violating one of the health and safety requirements, but we, my office could go in and request an injunctive, injunctive relief or an injunction, which is a court order, stopping whatever illegal activity is happening as a public nuisance.
Okay, gotcha. I thought that's what it meant, but I wanted to be sure. Okay. Now, I'm going to flip to the start of my questions, kind of going from the front to the back. Every page, Mr. Gris, no, I'm just joking. So, the first question I have is, under exemptions, one thing I noticed wasn't included is dentists. And I know, for instance, that my dentist, they do a, you know, where they feel you're here, and they're looking for if you have any tumors or growths or anything like that. So, I was wondering if they might be included under item A or somewhere in here.
I, I think they'd be under the medical exemption. I do see that it's, you're looking at 070A?
I am, yeah. I'm sorry, 070A, on page nine.
Well, that's right out of the county ordinance, so I...
Ah, we can improve on the county.
So, we could add, I mean, we could add dentists to that. I'm not sure if that meets the definition of massage in the, in the definitions with the, what a dentist was doing there.
I think, yeah, when I read the definitions, it seemed to me it did.
Okay.
Does the council follow what I'm asking about? Yeah, okay.
On page four, there's a definition of massage.
I do. Although he's in San Mateo, so it's no problem, but if he moves to San Carlos, yeah.
Well, I don't, I, I think we, we could add dentists to that list. They're professional, it's, they're, you know, similar to physicians and, and the other exempt.
How about a podiatrist?
Podiatrists...
Let's just throw them all out there. I don't, where do you, where do you stop on, on what, I think medical is medical, but, you know, whatever.
Well, it's a good question, but, you know, some of these, do they fall under...
We're not regulating below, I think it's the, the podiatrist, it's below the knee.
Below the knee, okay.
Yeah, there's a...
Still massage.
If I, if I may ask, where is the medical exemption that you two were referring to?
Oh, it's on page nine. Not apply to the following classes of individuals or businesses while engaged in the performance of their duties.
Oh, I'm sorry. What I meant to say, I thought you were referring to some blanket catch-all medical professional exemption.
No, there isn't.
That would automatically include dentist, potentially.
No, there isn't one. I don't see one. So, I could add dentist there.
And under item B, I was questioning that because I, and maybe this council would like to discuss it later, but I wanted to find out what your take is on it because, again, I've known, I've used barbers and, well, not beauticians, but barbers, who sometimes when they're through giving you a haircut, they may give you a, you know, a scalp massage a little bit as a, you know, part of their service, or a neck massage, that kind of thing. And it seems like with this, they'd be breaking the law by doing that. And I don't know if that's too heavy-handed or...
B exempts them from, from those.
Well, but, and maybe I'm misreading this. It says, "Except that this provision shall apply solely to the massaging of the neck, face, and/or scalp." So, you're saying, what that's saying is, that is allowed?
That's allowed under that exemption.
Okay, so I was misreading it. Very good. Okay, so I don't have a concern there. And under item, still on the same page, item F1, "The massage services are made equally available to all participants in the event." So, this is talking about if you have a sports event, let's say you had a road race, and you had some massage tables set up afterwards, that's allowed, that's an exemption.
That's allowed, that's right.
But is it considered to be made equally available if they, sometimes they'll charge like a $10 fee or something like that to recapture some cost? Is it still considered equally available if they're charging a small recapture fee?
I think it would. I think it would.
So, they'd be all right with that?
Yes.
All who can afford it.
To all, yeah, exactly. Then on the following page, page 10, I was questioning item B with the time periods of 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. And I was wondering how that would be policed. I could see if you have a business, if you have a storefront where you're operating and the shop has to be closed, but if you're out-call, I don't get how we police something. And we've talked about this before with other things like, you know, that we've talked about doing in terms of laws, and it's come down that, well, if you can't enforce it, why, why have a law?
Yeah, that's the, is the law enforceable? And if it's not enforceable, are you creating people who are lawbreakers by, that type of thing?
Yeah, exactly.
I, this, as I recall, is exactly out of the county ordinance, too, and I think this is one of those things where we're, I'm trying, I was trying to be very close to what the sheriff would be used to in, in areas that are under county jurisdiction. So, this is, and it's also, because it won't go late into the evening, I think it's designed to prevent the secondary effects where, where that becomes a destination in the evening rather than legitimate massage therapy.
So, you're saying in the case of a person that, like, I, you know, I've known massage therapists who, say, have their own table, it's in a kit, and they go to someone's home and they unfold the table and provide massage service. If someone was doing that at 9:30 in the evening in someone's, you know, living room, that's okay? Or it's not okay, but we're not going to enforce it, or what?
This is, that's a different, that's not prohibited by this, by this section here, because this is for a massage establishment.
Oh, okay.
So, if you have an establishment, you need to follow all these guidelines.
Okay.
So, there's out-call massage that aren't, not, not the same. We wouldn't have all these standards for somebody who is doing it, and this is just for establishments.
Okay. And then my last question on this page is item D. I noticed on item C, it, where it's talking about, you know, you have to have a list of what your services are printed out, right? Or displayed in your reception area. And then for out-call service, it says you have to provide that maybe on a, you know, small postcard or something.
That's right.
But when you get to item D, it says you have to have a copy of your certificate and business registration and so forth, displayed in the reception area. Again, what do you do with out-call service? Is the thought there that the out-call service only comes from an establishment like this? Or...
Well, we'd be relying on the, the regulation of the therapist that they have to have the appropriate state certificate from the California Massage...
Do they have to show that to their client, then?
They, I don't think this reads that way, but if, if we got a complaint about somebody who is performing that type of service and they didn't have the appropriate certificate, then, then they would be...
So, it'd be more of a retroactive measure than a proactive?
And I want to correct something. The, this, some of these health and safety issues might apply to an out-call therapist as I was reading them. There's, it's quite a long list here, so some of it might.
Yeah, it is, yeah. Mr. Collins?
Yeah, just a question I wanted to ask is that, in this section, it refers to all massage establishments. Now, is the word establishments assumed to mean a physical building? Or you have an establishment, it's, you know, "My company's an establishment, and if I'm out seeing a client, I'm the establishment." Or does this mean a physical...
Well, this is another one where...
If it means a physical facility, then you don't have to worry about the out-call aspect of it.
This is another one of those defined terms in the, not capitalized unfortunately there, so I can correct that, but it's defined at, on page four under section H.
Let's take a look at that, if we can, just jump over there.
It says, "The term massage business includes a certified massage practitioner who is the sole owner, operator, and employee of a massage business, operating as a sole proprietorship." That, that definition may be broad enough to include that person who is operating their business in a way that goes to people's homes.
Right, so they do define it.
In fact, massage, massage establishment says whether at a fixed place or at a location designated by the customer.
Yeah, there it is, yeah.
So, your questions are well taken.
Yeah, so then how does that relate then to, on item D, if you're an out-call, maybe you're an out-call-only type service, what do you do about your certificate and business reg, certificate?
You hang it outside your client's door.
You have to...
I mean, I'm not trying to, don't get me wrong, I'm not trying to create a hardship for a business like that. I'm just saying, is that an exemption, or do they still have to show it?
I just don't think that one applies to the, to that type of a situation.
Okay.
It's, there's no, there isn't a reception area or similar open place when that happens.
All right. Very good. And now for me, we get to the, the big one, item E on page 11. And it's somewhat also related, well, we'll wait till we get there. On item E, I intend to discuss this with the council, but I would like your take on it. My question here was, "To what end, for what purpose?" And for the audience, what this says is that the massage service shall basically keep a list of clients who've come through their door for two years. And by the way, I tried this out at the coffee shop that I go to and just, you know, trying to, am I too exercised about something? Or what, what does the public feel about this? And everybody I talked to thought, "That's an invasion of privacy. We don't like that, and it might even hurt the massage businesses because if you knew that you went to one of these places," not that there's anything wrong with them, don't get me wrong, but some people do view an individual who goes to a massage therapist as being a little, you know, it's, it's just not something that's always accepted by society, even though it's a, it's a clean and, and regulated business, but...
Well, I'm, I'm reading it here, and it talks about, "What needs to be kept is the date and hour that the service was provided, the service received, the name or initials of the employee entering the information, and the name of the massage practitioner administering the service."
Okay, so maybe I misread it. It doesn't include the name of the client.
Or the employee.
Yeah, it's just the employee. And this is for purposes of being able to document who's there. I mean, there's some limits on, on number of massage practitioners that can be allowed, that we, we have to be able to verify that.
Okay, very good. So, I misunderstood it. It's not such a big gahoonin' as I thought. Mr. Collins?
Through the chair, isn't it also to make sure that the names match the people that are licensed?
That's, that's correct. It's, it's all, it fits together to...
Right, got it. Okay. Good answer. And then item Z on page 13, why the 10? And, and just to give you an example, Mr. Rubens, I'm thinking, for instance, of, and I, you know, I, I know what we're trying to do here is help the, the profession out really by, if it, if it's clean, it's good, right? And I know the massage therapists want that, too, right? They, they, they're tired of having this colorful contingency that hangs on to their profession and brings it a bad name. But when I'm looking at item Z, that you can't have any more than 10 therapists, I'm thinking of a different profession, for instance, the nail salon in the 600 block of San Carlos Avenue, and my wife was just in there again, getting her, her nails done, her, you know. And you walk in, it's an amazing place. I mean, there's sometimes 20 people in there getting their nails done. So, I just kind of look at this a little bit and thought to myself, "Well, why do we have to limit it to 10? And where did we come up with 10? It seems like an arbitrary number." And, you know, if you could have a business and it's all legit, and you got everybody certified, and you had 15, what's the problem?
Well, I think it goes to the size of the, of the business and the, and the secondary impacts. What we're trying to do is minimize the impacts of the type of business that, that's there. And you're right, that could be completely on the up and up and legitimate. This was actually one where the Massage Therapy Council, it was more stringent than this. It's, it limited it to 10 total. This just has 10 working at one time, so you could actually have more employees than 10. It's just, there's only going to be 10 on-site, so you'd have 10 massage tables essentially that could be, that doesn't, it's not limiting the number of patrons that could be waiting for, for their massage, but it's just the, the number of therapists.
And a last question on this, so that if we, if I bring it up during discussion, is this, you know, I couldn't tell, reading through this, what was state, what you're pulling from the state, what's county, what's San Carlos, our own, you know, take on this? Is this us alone? Is this the county, or is this state required, or what?
These requirements, the health and safety requirements are largely from the county's ordinance.
So, we're free, if we wanted to change this, we could.
Oh, yeah, this is, this is your, this is your local regulation that's allowed by state law. I mean, we, we could not have a massage ordinance and totally rely on the state, but, you know, because of the issues that we've had involving people who are conducting illegal activity under the guise of massage therapy, we're trying to regulate as much as we reasonably can.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any other questions from the dais here?
I think we've massaged this thing to death.
You knew that had to come. All right, discussion. Any discussion on these? Many council members? The only item, go ahead, Mr. Olbert.
I was just going to say, I'm, I'm fine with it as is, happy to hear what others have to say.
I agree.
Okay, so that probably... Okay, so that probably leaves item Z on page 13. I guess I'm alone on my concern there. And frankly, you know, I don't think it's a real big one, but I think, you know, I could see, uh, you know, I'm just thinking, uh, years ago, I used to go to a, a massage therapist that was out on Industrial Road and there was a fairly large, uh, office. And I don't know how many, you know, massage tables they had in there, but, you know, I, I could see using one of those buildings and getting beyond the number of 10 perhaps, and why not? If, to me, it's, if everything else is legitimate and on the up and up, how could having 12 massage tables going at one time be any detriment if everything's on the up and up?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, which number would you like?
None.
10, 20, 30, 50?
Zero.
So I would, I would, I would say we should just keep it the way it is, and if we need to adjust it, we certainly can.
No, that, that's my point, Mr. Grisilli, is that it is arbitrary.
It is arbitrary.
And, you know, it's just some number that's picked out of a hat, we think we'll go with 10. And to me, it had, like I said, if everything's on the up and up and everything's legitimate, there's no reason to have a number at all. The only thing that should limit a massage business is parking and square footage and can they afford their rent?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Actually, a, a question for, uh, Mr. Rubens. It occurs to me, I mean, is the genesis of putting some limit, whatever the number is, on this, was the thinking of the people who were drafting it? I mean, uh, I could imagine a situation where there was no number and there were 200 people working in the establishment. That inherently, unless we were to separately start defining the number of supervisors and other stuff, it inherently in my mind raises the risks that something illicit might be happening sort of unbeknownst or out of control because, simply because of the scale of the operation. That's just a thought. I'm just, was anything like that proposed or is there any context you can give us on this?
That's, that's, that's definitely part of it and, and the, the concern is, I also, I think, an enforcement issue is the, and it's, I think it's related to that point, is if we have, uh, I'll just pick another arbitrary number, if we have 25, if we have 25 potent, uh, massage stations in a business, it's a lot harder to, um, conduct an inspection and enforcement when there's that many, uh, there, you know, that many, um, potential, um, massage therapy sessions going on at one point in time. Um, you know, if you have, if you have 10, it's a lot easier for a, a reasonable inspection to occur. I think that's probably part of it. I think it's a number that, uh, in consultation with the chief of police, we thought was a reasonable number. And I think that the concession about having 10 there at one time helps the businesses that have people that are licensed and statewide licensed, but have, but have practices, if you will, in different cities, at different workplaces, so that we're, we're trying to allow for the, the type of business that, or that, that recognize the, one of the, um, ways that practitioners make a living in this field is to have different appointments in different places with their clients.
Okay. Counsel?
Uh, if I could just want to make one other point, it also seems to me that maybe this size is related to all the supportive facilities, uh, that you have to have in an establishment like that. Toilets and bathrooms and showers and changing areas and all those things take up square footage, whereas at a, you know, at a beauty parlor, you've got little stations, somebody comes in and sits down, there's somebody working on you and you can take care of all that within a five-square-foot area. But at a, at a massage establishment, not only do you have a table where somebody is going to be laying down, you're probably going to have it partitioned off. And then, as I mentioned, you're going to have all these other, uh, all of these other support, uh, apparatus that has to go with that. So if you're talking about, you know, 10 massage therapists, you're also talking about potentially 10 clients, 10, um, 10 tables, who knows how many bathrooms and showers? I don't know how that's all regulated, but it seems to me that all of those things were probably taken into consideration when this number, uh, was arrived at.
However...
Not that I think it's a great number or a magic number.
Yeah, well, I, I, I'll give some input on that. I think it would have, where it would fall is over there at the planning department because they're going to look at occupancy and so forth, and based on occupancy and maximum potential occupancy, they're going to say you're going to need this many bathrooms, this many, you know, uh, parking spaces, et cetera, and that's going to, that in itself would probably limit this, this number because there's only so many buildings in town where you could T.I. them in such a way to get, get that sort of thing. So, I don't know. I, to me, I, again, I'd like to see no number in there at all, I'd see Z just take it out, but...
If I may, just, maybe that, maybe that, maybe just rewrite it so that it somehow, that the, the number of, uh, therapists and practitioners is tied to the square footage.
Through the chair, I think...
Or parking or whatever, make it a formula.
Through the chair, I, I like the number. I'd like to make a motion.
Make a motion.
Maybe I can get a second.
Okay.
Um, maybe not. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to introduce ordinance number...
1447?
I'm sorry.
1447?
1447, ordinance to the City Council of the City of San Carlos, amending chapter 5.40 of the San Carlos Municipal Code regarding massage therapy regulations in the City of San Carlos.
I'll second it.
Well, let me try this. I'll make a motion that we, uh, introduce an ordinance amending the San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 5.4, regarding massage therapy regulations within the City of San Carlos, but eliminate the, uh, limit of 10 massage therapists or practitioners working on practicing at the business premises at any one time. Seeing no second, Madam Clerk, we'll take a roll call.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember, member Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes. Some things you just have to give them up.
Okay, moving on to item 10C is consideration of adopting a resolution rescinding and appealing resolutions 2011-019 and 2012-004, and determining that the city should retain the housing assets and functions of the former San Carlos Redevelopment Agency and shall serve as the housing successor. Now, item 10D is connected, we should do one first and then the, the other one after that?
Yes.
Okay. Let me just see here before you get started. I have a, I have public comment on this item, so, go ahead.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council, Mark Suiki, Economic Development and Housing Manager. The next three items on your agenda all relate to fallout from the dissolution of the San Carlos Redevelopment Agency and specifically the loss of the 20% set aside of property tax increment revenue into an RDA fund for low and moderate income housing. That fund was used for programs and activities aimed at increasing, improving, and preserving affordable housing and for the administrative costs of managing and operating these programs. In particular, the city lost a source of funding to administer the below-market-rate housing ordinance and our down payment assistance loan program, as well as the assistance we have traditionally provided to local organizations including hip housing and Parca. Although ongoing funding and existing unencumbered cash balances in the RDA housing fund have been lost, the law which dissolved the RDA allowed the city to elect to retain any housing assets. In our case, there are four properties, 25 Dow loans, five notes receivable, and bond proceeds that were part of the RDA housing fund which may be retained by the city. Revenue generated by these assets could be used to fund the continuation of housing programs and activities in San Carlos. Item 10C on the agenda is primarily an administrative cleanup. Staff is recommending adoption of a resolution that would repeal two prior resolutions and make a new determination that the city is electing to retain the housing assets. The two prior resolutions were adopted in February 2011 and January 2012 respectively. The first was to create a local housing authority. This was adopted in anticipation that proposed state legislation would dissolve the RDA and that housing assets would be lost if we did not have a housing authority. The resolution adopted earlier this year was made pursuant to the dissolution law and indicated that the city would retain the housing assets, but also designated the housing authority. The current resolution clarifies the designation as being the city and not the housing authority. Based on a review with legal counsel, it was determined that creating and operating a city housing authority would add complexity and administrative burden without any commensurate benefit. I can take your questions and allow you to consider adoption of item 10C or continue and present the related item 10D, and you can consider them together. It's your...
Questions? I, I have one, um, because I, I'm a little concerned here for my own, uh, thinking on this. You've, you've given us the first item 10C, which is consideration, as you said, of adopting a resolution rescinding and appealing resolutions, the two resolutions, and determining that the city should retain the housing assets, and yet, item 10D is exactly that second part, to retain the housing assets, uh, as a successor to the former RDA. Why is it set up that way? Is there not a way we can, uh, adopt a resolution rescinding and appealing the former resolutions without comment on determining that the city should retain the housing assets and so forth?
So the, uh, we could take them all together if, if...
That's not what I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Suiki, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying, is it possible to change what we have here and simply vote to, um, consider, consider adopting a resolution rescinding and appealing the two resolutions and leave it at that on item 10C? And if we then on item 10D, vote to consider adoption of a resolution identifying the housing assets to be retained by the city and so forth? Can, is there not a way to separate those?
The reason they're separated is that...
No, I mean to separate them. Excuse me.
To unseparate them, to, you want to combine them?
Delink them. Here's why, let me explain. Um, uh, excuse me, counsel, I'm going to have to go ahead and, and, you know, show my vote here. Me personally, philosophically, I don't agree with any of this. I think, number one, if the, if the, if the state of California doesn't care about RDAs and so forth, then fine, we're done. All this work that goes on with low-income housing and so forth, me personally, as a council member, as an elected official, I'm done. I want out of the business altogether. And in fact, one of my questions was going to be, if, if we did just give all this stuff up, uh, what's the benefit to us in terms of, do we get more of a tax increment or do we lose? And I think I know what happens to these assets, they go to the county and the county takes over this whole process of, you know, putting in low-income housing and so forth. So, again, speaking for myself, fine, let the county have it. I don't want the city of San Carlos, my government, involved in, uh, aspects of low-income housing. Philosophically, I don't believe in it. If, you know, we, we, if we have ordinances that manage housing and keep it at a certain level and of health and safety, fine and good. You've got apartment managers out there who, you know, manage those buildings and as you build new housing, let's, let's face it, the older housing becomes by, you know, de facto, lower-income housing. And the new housing becomes de facto, higher-income housing. That's the mark, that's the free market system. Is there something funny about what I said? I'm looking at the audience, I mean, the, I'm giving my feeling on this. So, the reason I would like to delink them is because, uh, I don't mind voting to rescind what we did before, but I certainly don't want to determine that we should retain it because, again, I would, I would vote to give it to the county, let them run it if they, if they so choose, and if that's what the state seems to be, you know, the direction the state wants us to go.
Mr. Suiki, if I, if I may respond. This item wasn't set up that way, it was really set up to modify the council's previous direction that they've taken on this.
Which, excuse me, Mr. City Manager, I was not at that meeting, so I did not...
Okay.
...attend and was not able to vote on that.
Right, so this, this item isn't set up to, right now, rescind that decision. So if this item, in other words, if the council didn't take action on this item, then the existing action of the council would stay in place, which is that we've created housing authority. Now, technically, you know, there's an interpretation happening under the law that says we, you know, maybe it needs to be set up a different way, which is what this is designed to do. It's to, designed to set it up differently to get to the same end that the council had already described. So if the council were to vote against this and make comments that, you know, they were, they actually wanted to rescind it, we would bring it back on the next agenda structured in a way that you could, you know, walk away from the housing assets. But that's not on the table tonight.
Okay. I think I understand, and I think I understand how I need to vote then on all of it, okay.
Through the chair. Um, what, what, the other part of, uh, Mayor Grokot's question was, uh, what are sort of the consequences, both pluses and minuses, of whether we retain control, whether we manage the housing, this housing process, or the county does? I'd just be curious if staff has any perspective on that.
I have my own opinions, but you know.
There's $8.9 million in value in assets that the city could retain by, by being the, quote-unquote, "housing successor." That would, we'd be turning all, all that over to the county. That includes, uh, two properties or properties that are adjacent to Wheeler Plaza. If we have any intention of that project to happen, we would like to control those properties. And liquidation of any of these assets are funds that could be used for, for our housing programs. We do have a below-market-rate housing ordinance, uh, there's a, there's an administrative cost to, to administer that, that program. This would provide a funding source rather than it coming from the general fund.
In addition, I would add that, that these, uh, activities are going to continue, whether they're in the city housing authority or the county housing authority, and you would lose the opportunity to be involved in that decision-making process about low and moderate income housing within this city. And, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but there, there have been different levels of housing between low and, and mod-level housing associated with these units that if they were handed off to another agency over time, those could be changed in a, in a way that, um, the housing authority or the San Carlos City Council didn't necessarily agree with, and you would have lost the ability to do that.
If I may, just to make, I want to make sure I understand that last point. So, leaving aside the issue about whether we, whether any public agency ought to be involved in providing low-market-rate housing, affordable housing, if I heard you correctly, Mr. Baltby, what you're saying is that if we were to, uh, get out of that business, so to speak, we would, to a certain extent, be at the mercy of whatever the county decided to do within the confines of the city of San Carlos. I presume they can't just unilaterally come in and tell us what they're going to do and change our zoning ordinances and that kind of thing, but, but you're saying we would lose basically a, an ability to influence that or manage it?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Uh, one other question I have, yeah. Isn't there some sort of a state requirement that we as a city provide a certain level of low-income housing? Would we, I mean, are we allowed to even say, uh, we're not in that business anymore?
Under the housing element of the general plan, we need to plan for affordable housing. Uh, we need to, uh, indicate an effort to provide for affordable housing. We don't actually have to physically create it, but we have to at least provide the means for it to happen. That typically means zoning for affordable housing, um, but it, it sure helps if you have a below-market-rate housing program, an inclusionary program, you're providing funding, uh, to make that happen, otherwise it's unlikely to happen. And the state would look favorably on that.
Thank you.
And I'm, I'm going to jump in here and add to what Mr. Suiki said because, uh, his comments refer to current state law. And he knows and Mr. Savay knows and probably Mr. Grisilli knows because he sits on the A-BAG board, that that's all changing. Through AMTC and A-BAG, they are, uh, through those two agencies, the state intends to come down on municipalities that don't actually build the housing. And they intend to do that by withholding, uh, transportation funds and other funds from municipalities that don't actually build. Uh, there is, it's already been created partly through AB 32 and SB 375, the link of housing planning to transportation planning, and the result will be the densification of downtowns. And that's going to probably happen whether we like it or not, but that's what's happening with that state law.
Okay, well then, forgive me, I mean, what would be the point of not adopting this?
Well, again, you're, you're, you bring up a good question, and for me, it's very difficult because Mr. Baltby brings up a good point, that you lose control of the planning and, and the design and so forth to some ex... control of the planning and the design and so forth to some extent. I mean, it goes, still goes through a process of our, you know, Planning Commission and, you know, maybe to the council at some point, depending on the size of the project and so forth. But for one who strongly believes philosophically that the state shouldn't be mandating housing from, you know, top-down management, they shouldn't be linking our transport, you know, our citizens are paying taxes to the state, and then that money is being tied up by MTC and ABAG, or will be in the future, based on how we do with these plans and the RENA numbers and so forth, the RENA being Regional Housing Needs Assessment numbers. All this is commingled together. I'm opposed to it, both, you know, from a practical standpoint in the state managing housing and from a philosophical standpoint. I strongly believe it should be left to the market. There's ways that we can handle the, you know, the quality of housing, again, by managing through building ordinances and building and life safety issues. Do these buildings meet those standards? Are they safe? Are they clean? Are they marketable? And if they meet that, fine. But to tell people, you know, you've got to build so much of this housing and then give it away at a certain price tag, that's taking away a person's property right, and I disagree with it strongly. And furthermore, when you build these programs, they work for a few people, but it's like a lottery because the people who get the low-income housing apply through that program, some get chosen, many don't. And that, to me, is also substantially unfair.
Through the chair.
I'm sorry. Could I speak?
Yes, you may.
Do we have a public comment?
Yes, we do.
Could we, maybe we could get to that.
Let's hear from Mr. Olbert first, and then I'll go to public comment.
Actually, I had forgotten about the public comment. I was actually going to propose a motion.
I know.
Okay. Well, if you're going to do that, then we do need to hear from Mr. Gialino. Thank you, Mark.
Good evening, members of the council. Mr. Mayor, I share some of your philosophical beliefs. I don't believe our government should be in the housing business. That's best left to the private sector. When government gets involved in business, it distorts markets. That being said, and recognizing Mr. Maltby's comment, I do believe there is some benefit to the city maintaining control. But philosophically, I too, as yourself, Mr. Mayor, am opposed to city government and county government, for that matter, being in the housing business. I think that's better left to the private sector, and it serves the market well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Olbert.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to propose adoption of Resolution Number...
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, a resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos rescinding and repealing Resolution Numbers 2011-019 and 2012-004, and determining that the City of San Carlos shall retain the housing assets and functions previously performed by the San Carlos Redevelopment Agency and shall serve as the housing successor to the former agency.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, I'm just going to make a quick clarification on my position, not to reiterate everything, but as the city manager pointed out, this, for me, creates a really, you know, tough one. And the way it's presented here as a staff report and resolutions and so forth, the way it's set up, it's really hard to vote against it and for the reasons I care to. But to your point, we're better in control than not in control if this is going to have to be the case. So, I'm going to be voting for these, but not very happy about it. Roll call.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes. Item 10D, Mark, you want to give a quick overview of this?
Sure.
I think we know what it's about, but go ahead.
10D is a resolution that specifically identifies the housing assets that will be retained by the city rather than be subject to the liquidation process of the successor agency to the RDA. Exhibit A of Attachment 1 in the packet lists housing assets with an aggregate value of $8.9 million, including $700,000 of housing bond proceeds, down payment assistance loans of $1.2 million, a $3.8 million note receivable from the San Carlos Development Corporation related to the Elms Project, three other residual receipts notes, and three properties. One of them is a BMR unit at Pacific Hacienda, one of them is a property adjacent to Wheeler Plaza, and one is a property adjacent to South Plaza. There's a fourth property at 1249 to 1265 San Carlos Avenue, which is being identified as a housing asset but will continue to be held by the successor agency, pending a determination of the need for, the extent of, and the liability associated with potential contamination on that property. Staff is recommending adoption of the resolution to clearly identify the housing assets being retained. But just to be clear, it's legal council's opinion that by virtue of the city's prior election to retain the housing assets, that they have been transferred as of February 1, 2012, as a matter of law. I'm available for your questions.
Questions? I do have one. Taking control of these properties, what does that mean regards, for instance, I'm thinking of the property at South Plaza, if it is the building I'm thinking of behind the market, and we've been through that project before, and when we did go through that project years ago, to use the phrase that I said, it seemed like trying to put a square peg in a round hole. It just didn't work, and especially if the market was going to stay in business. So, if we came to that determination again, are we free at some point to put that property on the market and sell it?
Yes, and I think the determination we would make is, do we want to sell it at market value or as restricted affordable housing, which is the way it's been operated?
Sure.
And you'll get a different value either way.
Understand.
And different consequences.
But we have that control?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to propose the council adopt Resolution Number 30?
Correct. Yes.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos for the city and for the successor agency to the former San Carlos Redevelopment Agency pursuant to Part 1.85 of Division 24 of the California Health and Safety Code, identifying the housing assets to be retained by the City of San Carlos as the housing successor to the former agency.
I'll second it.
Roll call, or any discussion on this first? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes. And item 10E, also related.
Item 10E seeks your approval to increase the budget for expenditures in Fund 29, otherwise known as the Housing in lieu Fund. Fund 29 is where any fees paid in lieu of providing housing under the BMR ordinance are deposited. These funds can be used to increase and improve the supply of housing affordable to moderate, low, very low, or extremely low-income households, as well as any reasonable costs related to the administration of our housing programs, including grants and assistance to other organizations. There's currently a balance of $1.4 million of accumulated fees in Fund 29. The increase in budget compensates for the loss of administrative and program funding that had been budgeted in the RDA Housing Fund, which was no longer available after February 1, 2012. We're asking for a $70,000 increase for the remainder of the fiscal year. This includes funding for services provided by HIP Housing, which we have supported now for over six years. It also includes budget for contract staff support, professional services, and legal services. I'm available for any questions you may have.
Mr. Olbert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Suwicky, I have to admit, this one is the one item in tonight's agenda where I have to admit I got lost in looking at the financials. So, I'm going to phrase this as a question, but I'm just trying to make sure I understand them. It sounds to me like what staff is asking is that we allow the use of existing reserves or existing fund balances to increase, to compensate for the lost revenue that we no longer have because of the RDA set aside. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, effectively, it's, in one sense, it almost sounds to me like it's not so much that the expenses are going up $70,000 as there's $70,000 of uncovered expenses that previously were covered by some revenue, and now they're not, and you're going to be drawing down reserves.
Correct.
Okay. For what it's worth, I have to say, at least for me, I, that just occurred to me about two minutes ago, I could not figure this out ahead of time, so.
Mr. Collins.
Thank you. Mr. Olbert referred to this as taking the $70,000 out of reserves. Is this formerly the RDA reserves, or is this general fund reserves now?
This is Fund 29, so we have a...
Separate fund.
Separate fund. We have a city ordinance, the below-market-rate housing ordinance, and under that ordinance, if you're required to build 15% affordable housing. If you have a partial, if that works out to be a partial unit, depending on how many units you're building, you'll pay a partial fee that will go into that, into that fund. We updated the ordinance a couple of years ago. Now, you can actually pay fees in lieu of actually providing the units. Those would go into the fund as well. We also adopted an affordable housing impact fee for rental housing where, instead of building the units, they pay a fee. They can choose to build the units if they want to, but otherwise, they would pay the fee. The fund balance, it all depends on how much housing is being built in San Carlos. That's going to determine what's getting deposited into that fund. However, the retention of the housing assets may provide us with additional funding sources. In particular, the note receivable from the San Carlos Development Corporation is about $380,000 a year in interest that we receive on that note. That could become a funding source in Fund 29 going forward.
Okay, so, that may, you may have answered my other question. So, when you talk about these fees that, they're in lieu fees, rather than providing housing, we provide support to agencies that do, now, does that mean that these are things like Samaritan House, Shelter Network, HART, HIP Housing, that sort of thing?
That's traditionally what we've been using Fund 29 for, with the exception of two organizations which we were funding out of the RDA Housing Fund. And I'm not sure why they got placed where they were budget-wise. That was prior to my arrival, and we've just continued that because that's where the budget The collection of the in lieu fees, however, you would like to build up a balance that, for which you could then go fund a larger project. If the units aren't being created under the inclusionary ordinance and they're paying a fee, then that's giving the city money to then become a funding provider to a nonprofit that would build housing.
All right. Now, the interest you said we're getting, is the intention to use that to continue to fund these agencies in the future?
That could be a source of funding as long as we're able to retain it.
All right. So, do you foresee us sometime in the near future where some of these we may not be able to fund?
I think we need to look at it on a year-to-year basis as to what our revenues are going to be and determine what we can, what we can support in terms of funding organizations or funding a project.
Well, being on HART and having served on the board for HIP Housing and being familiar with Shelter Network and Samaritan House, I would hope that we, in the future, would find ways to continue to support these. Thank you.
Just one question, then. On page two of the staff report, under Fund 29, where you break down the expenses, essentially what you're doing is pulling from what was in the RDA budget approved earlier when we had an RDA, and you're just applying it here. Is that correct?
Yes, I was indicating what had been budgeted in the RDA and what we spent year-to-date and what was essentially lost by that budget being taken away, and suggesting that we fund, you know, a smaller amount of that out of Fund 29 for the remainder of the year.
So, the $70,000 represents what would have been spent for the remainder of the year had we had an RDA, and it sounds like you just said you actually cut it down a little bit.
Right, it's about three-quarters of what we had left.
Three-quarters, okay. Thank you. All right. I have a public comment card, and I think it's for two people, is that right? You're both, you filled out one card, but for two people. Okay. So, Kate Har, Com, I can't quite read your lettering there. It looks like Comfort Har, you can say it. And then Alora Fanucci, Fanuki, sorry. Sorry, Laura.
Fanucci.
Oh, it says Fanu, I'll let you say it.
Very good.
Kate and Laura, here we are.
Well, I'm Kate Comfort Har. I am Executive Director of HIP Housing, and I'm relatively new. I started in September, so I wanted to come tonight for a couple of reasons. One was to introduce myself and to kind of get to know the council a little bit because there's many of you I haven't met yet. And the other reason was to thank you for your consideration of funding us, not through RDA any longer, but through this Fund 29. HIP Housing provides creative, affordable housing solutions throughout San Mateo County. We have a home-sharing program. We also have a self-sufficiency program and a property development program. Typically, through the RDA, we've been funded for our home-sharing program, which partners people who have space in their home with people who need a place to live, so essentially creating new affordable housing out of existing housing stock. Works out very well. Most of our clients, which Laura will talk about a little bit later, are low-income or very low-income, and together, they can create a kind of symbiotic relationship where they can help each other to either stay in a home or to bring down costs for both parties. I think that what I'd like to do is go ahead and let Laura address some of the program results that we've had and tell you a couple of stories about some of the people that we serve. Thank you. Just wanted to mention, I am a San Carlos resident. I'm actually very proud that the city has provided funding to support affordable housing programs in our community. You know, our home-sharing program with residents of San Carlos, the average income of the residents that we work with is really at poverty level. So, these are clients that are earning, you know, around $23,000 or less a year, and they simply cannot afford, you know, to go out and find their own apartment. And we know here in San Mateo County, we do have an incredible affordable housing crisis. We have Section 8 waiting lists that are closed. We have long waiting lists for affordable housing. You know, it's just, it's really, this home-sharing program is really a terrific way to help to address some of those critical issues that face residents that can't afford their housing here in the county. You know, we always ask our clients why they need a home share, and some of the answers that San Carlos residents have said to us is that, you know, they've become disabled. Some of them have received enormous rent increases. One received a $200 rent increase. Some residents have their work hours reduced. Some clients are homeless. Some people are sharing with people who are in foreclosure. Some people have had foreclosure issues themselves, and some are saying that they're scared to use online services to find housemates, and that's where HIP Housing comes in because we have a very comprehensive program that helps people find housemates in a very comfortable way. We had one resident here in San Carlos that we've been working with since 2001. Unfortunately, she passed away last year at the age of 99. She had been home-sharing for many years through our programs. Her most recent housemate was a teacher who's earning about $40,000 a year, can't afford her own place here. And when she passed away, her housemate decided to stay in the unit, and now she's rented two of the bedrooms to two seniors. So, it's really a nice way that she's been able to stay where she is and help two other seniors be able to live here affordably in our city. So, I thank you for your consideration tonight. I'd love to come back at another time and do a short PowerPoint presentation to tell you more about the other programs that we have. I may have to answer any questions that you have about our programs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Go ahead. So, anybody want to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we approve budget expense increases totaling $70,000 in Fund 29, Housing in lieu, in order to continue activities and programs previously funded by the former redevelopment agency's Low- and Moderate Income Housing Fund.
Second. Roll call, or any discussion on this? No? Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes. Just a comment to the ladies, we can't, we generally don't, let's put it that way, get into a discourse with public, people who come and give public comments, so that's why you didn't get any questions, I'm sure. But feel free to call any one of us or send us an email. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to the item that we pushed to the end, which is item 9A, and discussion of how to fill a vacancy on the dais here. So, do we need to review where we left off, or... Does council want to take this up?
Mr. Mayor, just a brief update. This item's been continued two times. The last was at a special meeting held Friday, week ago, Friday afternoon. And where you are right now is continuing to decide, under the, under state law, when to hold the election to, for the, to fill the vacancy caused by the resignation of former Mayor Klein and the appointment, whether or not to appoint to fill the vacancy. to fill the vacancy. There's one new bit of information I'd like to share, and that's there, there is a Government Code Section 36512 with the 60-day requirement, not only applies to the calling of the special election, but it also applies to filling of the vacancy. So you have until June 17th to both call the election, select the date, and to fill the vacancy during that time period. I think your, your timeline now with the applications in and the deadline today, you still have one regular meeting to do that, and you could call special meetings if, if needed for, for that process. So that's why the, this item's agendized that way, to, to provide you with the opportunity to schedule in compliance with that deadline. And-
Clarification on that point. It's not, it is or it is not mandating that we fill the vacancy with an appointment, or is it just saying if we're going to go through the process, we have to do it by a certain date?
The latter is correct.
The latter, okay, very good. Thank you. Mr. Collins has a question.
No, I'm just, I would, if it's all right, if you're ready for discussion, I would-
Okay, I thought you had a, I'm sorry, I thought you had a question. Are there any questions for staff at all? I have one. We had today as the deadline for applications. Do we have those? Do we know who, who we're dealing with?
Aye.
Aye, people.
Nine folks, and I thought we provided a list to the council.
Sent by email.
Okay.
Yeah, it was sent by email.
I did, yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't see it. Okay.
So we've got, got nine candidates. I'm familiar with eight of them.
Thank you.
So pretty pleased with the turnout.
Very good. All right, Mr. Collins had something to start out with?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since I wasn't at the last meeting, well, I was here by voice only, it was, I have to tell you that from my end, just communicating with everybody up here from a remote location was difficult. But what I wanted to say is, since there's been a lot of, a lot of stuff has happened in the last couple of weeks, but I want to, I want to go back a little bit. For all of us, this event, at least for me, and I, I guess I better just speak for myself because I really don't know how, what anyone else's reaction was. But for me, this was a real shock. I've known Andy a long time, liked him very much. Very much of a shock. I think it certainly threw me for a loop. It took me a while to sort of process it. It's taken me a long time to process this. I followed elections ever since we moved back to town in 1986, and to me, every election, school board, city council elections, were all important elections. I took great care to get to know the people that ran for office, and it was important to me that we elected the right people. So I've participated in all those elections as a voter. Took me a long time, my own, from my own process of thinking, to get to the point where I felt that I could make a contribution to this council. But again, they've all been very important to me. So this process, the last few weeks, has just been frustrating, obviously frustrating. Playing it out in the press, to me, has been personally embarrassing. I think we're better than that. And what I'd like to do tonight is move the process along. I don't want to talk too long. I know other people probably have things to say. We've been faced with three options. Mr. Olbert's option to have a short election and appoint somebody for six months. I've previously stated that I don't agree with that. I respect the fact that Mr. Olbert, that that's his belief, that's what he wants. That's fine. We all have a different opinions on that. But for me, I, I, I want, I want someone who, again, is going to provide us with the stability that we need. The cost is an issue. We just lost $1.3 million from our general fund to, from RDA, and so that's a huge hit. So to me, again, $50,000 is a big deal. Mr. Grisilli's and my option was, let's have an election, election next year, and let's make sure that we open this process to as many people as possible and not have a restriction on the, on the people that apply. Philosophically, I still believe that. So that brings me back to Mr. Grocott's proposal, and that I want to ask him about momentarily, and that's the one that says, at least as of the 18th, when we had that meeting then, Mr. Grocott, your suggestion was you would be willing to go with an election next year if we had a restriction on that candidate, or at least we asked that candidate not to run again for reelection. So at this point, given the stories and all that, what I'd like to know is, is, are you, would you again consider making that option or that offer? Because if you, if you are, I would be willing to go along with it.
Yes, I, I'm prepared to do that.
Okay.
Although I do have some things that I've, and, you know, talk about playing it out in the press, there are some other things that I've thought of since then that have caused me to dig in my heels, if you will, on, on some things.
I completely understand that. I think we've all dug in our heels.
But for the sake of compromise, I'm still willing to consider my compromise.
And, you know, and, and just to summarize, you know, we, we live in a democracy. This is a, this is a democratic republic. People elect us to make decisions, and I understand your, your feelings about the fact that a few years ago, we had an election where there wasn't any true competition. I, I understand that. I respect it. But at, at this point, despite the fact that I am, you know, principally opposed to decreasing the candidate pool, I understand political realities. I've said that before, even before I was a council member. And so understanding those political realities, I am certainly willing to go along with your initial offer.
Okay, very good. This is a little difficult because this is a continuation of an item, and I do have some speaker cards. I wasn't sure where to plug these in. So if the council will be pleased with this, I would, I'm going to ask for public comment. So I've got two speaker cards, and the way this was filled out, I don't think it really matters. One said 9, 9A, Item I, and I don't think it really matters. So they're both 9A, and Brian Randall and Glenn Jolino. Gentlemen, you can fight for the podium here.
I take this one.
Yeah, thank you. And it's a race, and Mr. Randall is winning.
Mr. Mayor, City Councilman, Brian Randall, San Carlos. I have spent time in Egypt. Egyptians have died for their democracy. This year at last they have won their right to vote. Here in San Carlos, some question spending $50,000 to run our special election. It is a relatively small amount to preserve our democratic right to vote for a council member of public choice. We have two councilmen trying to get their longtime friend onto the city council through the back door without public voting. I have great concern. If they succeed, they will have an unbeatable three to two majority for a long time. The voters should decide who sits on council. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Brian. Mr. Jolino.
I must say, I largely agree with the sentiments expressed by the previous speaker. I've expressed my opinion to you previously, that I think that you are put in your position by the people. The seats you're sitting in belong to the people. And to that degree, the people have a right to decide who sits in that seat. If it's any, any indication, I recognize it's not a scientific poll, but this afternoon I happened to be reading the patch and saw that there was a, an informal poll put on the patch. And I don't know how reflective that is of the total community, but as of my last looking, which was just prior to leaving for the council meeting this evening, 74% of the people had weighed in on having an election in 2012 as opposed to 2013. And if that's respective in any sense of the will of the people in this community, I would strongly urge you to give that due consideration in your decision tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, further discussion, yes?
Yeah, actually, just a clarification. Since it's been a while, there have been various iterations. Would you mind spelling out what your compromise proposal was, just so we can all make sure that we understand it?
So my compromise proposal being that, compromise because my first position is, I would rather have an election than not, and sooner than later. And I think probably most of you read my comments in the paper, that looking at that particular seat, if you can look at it that way, understanding we do run in a horse race. But the last time that seat really saw a contest, a true contest, was when Brad Lewis ran for it in 2005, and it was Mr. Lewis, Mr. Grisilli, myself, and Mr. Hoffman, I believe. And it was a, you know, it was a nice campaign season, a lot of debate and so forth. Mr. Lewis decided not to re-up after his one term in office, and it created an opening when Bob and I ran for reelection, and Mr. Klein put his name in the, in the hopper for that seat. And being that there was no, you know, no fourth candidate to compete in there, Mr. Klein, you know, was automatically, you might say, elected to the council. So that's why that's my first position, and I would rather see an election sooner than later. But given that we're at a place where we are, where we seem to be at, you know, a two-to-two vote, I'm willing to compromise on holding an election in 2012 and hold it in 2013 if we can say to the candidates that we interview, you know, ask them the question, do you intend to run in November? And if their answer is yes, then, you know, at least allow for that question so that we can weigh that in our consideration. But even going further, if, if I could get the agreement, that we'd ask, we would ask them, not in an asking way, just simply asking the question, but ask them actually not to run. In other words, hold them to a gentleman's agreement, obviously, that if we appoint you to this position, we're, we're expecting that you will not run in November of 2013. You will not be an incumbent candidate. And that's, that's, so that's my position. That's my compromise.
The, the latter part of what you said is, as you talked about earlier, actually, when you talked about other things earlier about housing and some other things about philosophical, because our city attorney has basically said it's unenforceable, that latter part of what you said, that, that bothers me. But I also understand that, as you did in the housing situation where you compromised your, your philosophy to vote for that, I can understand that, and I can, I'm willing to do the same thing. I appreciate Mr. Collins's idea to, to come to the middle. But, but I guess I need to say one thing because it, somehow this, this idea floated out there, and I guess I have to speak to that, that supposedly Mr. Collins and I had some candidate in mind. There's nine people on that, that list. I think I know seven, I know eight of them, and I think probably any of the, and I don't know the other gentleman, or, or, and again, I, just to glance at it, just to make sure I'm counting right, one, I guess seven of the nine I know personally. And to, to allude that I, or Mr. Collins, and again, I'm going to speak for myself, that I would have a candidate in mind is ludicrous. That would, I have not, never set an agenda up here in six and a half years. Secondly, if you think the process through, let's assume I did have a candidate, and let's even assume that Mr. Collins had the same candidate. That's only two votes. You need a third vote. So I think it was just ludicrous to bring that up. I think it was, it was, well, it just was. And, and so anyway, that's just my opinion. I'm willing to go along with the compromise, and so we can, we can get this, and then hopefully we can set a time next week to interview, and by the 11th, get a fifth person.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor.
This is a discussion or a motion?
Discussion.
Discussion, okay.
Or just a, just a comment.
Yeah, comment, okay.
The proposal that you outlined, you know, isn't my first choice, but I think that, you know, people who like laws and sausages shouldn't watch them being made. So, so we bend with, we bend to stuff, and I think that that's a perfectly reasonable compromise position. I understand there will be some hard feelings among some people in the, in the community about that, and I would just ask them to remember that effectively by having people accept the fact, when they're being appointed to this, that we're asking them not to run in 2013, that that's not enforceable in a legal sense. It is enforceable in a political sense. They would have to have a darn good reason to, to turn their back on that. So I, I think this is a, I think this is a good approach, and I'd be happy to support it. And in fact, I will make a motion, if we need a motion, to do that.
Need a motion.
All right, I move that we-
I think we need a resolution, Mr. Olbert, I think. Resolution here.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, eight, yeah, 9A1.
Resolution number?
Twenty, thirty-one.
Thirty-one, okay. So I move that the council adopt Resolution Number 31, Resolution of the City, Council of the City of San Carlos, considering the call of a special election to fill the remainder of term due to vacancy pursuant to Municipal Code Section 2 dot 08 dot 030, determining that a special election is unnecessary, and determining that the election for the vacant seat shall occur on the next general municipal election on November 5th, 2013. Do we need to make a, I guess since it's not legally enforceable, we don't?
I don't think it's part of the, it would be part of this. It's just an understanding amongst ourselves that it would be a question that would be asked, and of course, by stating it as we have from the dais, it would be understood by the candidates.
Mr. Collins, are you going to second that?
Yes, I second it.
Roll call?
Councilmember Collins.
Excuse, I think I should say this before we vote. I just wanted to acknowledge an email that all of us received from the gentleman, the very young gentleman, the high school student, Ken-
Kevin Harris.
Kevin Harris, who wrote to us a very thorough and lengthy email. He was the, the student who came and spoke to us from the youth, the youth, what do we call it? Not youth group, Youth Advisory Council. Thank you, Mr. Grisilli. And he gave his arguments for why we should hold an election, and I'm not trying to undo what we've just done, but I just wanted to comment on that. I thought it was very thoughtful, very logical, and very thorough, and I just wanted to commend him and the Youth Advisory Council, the type of work that they do, and, and his input into our debate of the issue here. So just wanted to recognize him.
We may see him on the council someday.
We just may, yes. Adam Clark.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Oh, yes.
Mayor Grocott?
Yes. Now, do we need to then look at the dates that we do interviews? Does that need to be a resolution or anything like that?
No, that's just, you would just have a motion on that after you have an opportunity to discuss. And I might add, it's about 10:25. If, if it's going to take more than five minutes, you might want to extend.
Make a motion to extend the meeting to 10:45.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm sorry, Mr. City Attorney, I didn't quite catch what you were saying.
I, I was just saying, we've got it agendized so that you can consider candidates and interviews, and an interview schedule. So you might keep in mind that the timeline under Government Code 36512, that your decision has to be completed by June 17th on the appointment.
June 17th?
Yes.
Can we set a date now?
Mr. Mayor, I was looking that we would have, if it's possible, to have the interviews sometime next week, because our next council meeting is the 11th. sometime next week, because our next council meeting is the 11th.
Okay.
That's just a suggestion, you know?
Mr. Mayor, I'm perfectly fine with that suggestion, but I almost wonder if it would be possible to ask staff to arrange the interviews for, as soon as we can, and coordinate both our schedules. We could perhaps give them input here tonight and have them talk to the candidates to find out what day, what day works. Not with the intent of trying to slow things down, from what Mr. Grisilli said, but actually, if we could pull them forward, I'd be happy to pull them forward.
The point I'm trying to make is, and I agree with what, the first part of what you said, to have staff identify, talk to the folks, but I think we have to set the date, and we have to tell them what time to show up, and if they can't make it, that's their, we can't schedule it around them. Because at least what we've done in the past, and again, just a suggestion, what we've done is, we sit down, and we take 20 minutes, 30, whatever time out you want, and we interview them all at one time. And then, because it's a public meeting, so we're not going to have, we can't have nine public, well, we can, but just have one public meeting, and we spend three, four, five hours, whatever it takes, and we try to vote and try to pick a, that's what we've done before.
That is, yeah.
But again, I didn't mean to criticize it, but that's how we normally do it.
So through the mayor, if I may, if you're open to it, we'd try to schedule a special meeting between now and June 11th, where obviously, all four members of the council are available, and the majority of the candidates, and hopefully, all the candidates are also available. So the sooner we start on that, the more likely we are to find a date that's going to work for everybody.
And through the chair, I would suggest that that, the meeting start, no, it wouldn't be a day meeting, it would be an evening meeting, possibly...
Early evening.
Five o'clock, something like that.
That's right.
I would say, if you're open, five o'clock. Opportunity for the public to view the process. So say, five to 10, I mean, that gives us a five-hour window or something, but as opposed to during the day.
Through the chair, based on your prior experience with doing this, since we have, what is it, nine candidates, if we assume all nine of them show up, how long do you think it would take to go through this process? I'm not talking about the voting, I mean, just the interviewing.
Well, in the past, we did do these as groups, if I remember right?
No, we actually didn't.
Individually.
But I think we only took 15 or 20 minutes, at the most.
Per person, right.
So if we did 20 minutes...
Sorry, I'd forgotten how we...
If we did 20 minutes, times nine, it'd be 180 minutes, which is three hours. Plus, it's going to go over that, so it's going to be about three and a half hours.
Okay, so five, so starting at five, would give us time to not be making decisions at 11 o'clock at night.
Exactly, that's what I was trying, that's what I was trying to speak to.
That's what I was trying to check, okay.
Thanks for remembering. I'd forgotten how we'd done that, but...
That's okay.
Okay.
Do we need a, do we need a motion for this, or just...
I don't think we need a motion. I think we've got enough direction. Also, just so you're aware, that evening, that meeting will be agendized so that you would, just like you did tonight with the planning commissioner, end the meeting by coming and reporting out on the fact that you've selected presumably a council member, if you have selected a council member.
Through the chair, but we would be holding the meeting here, correct?
Well, actually, we'd open the meeting here, and then... The interviews, we open the meeting here, and we have the interviews in the conference room, and you come back and report out.
The last time, we had the interviews in the library.
You're right, last time, we did, with, I guess, the first available room we have that's close to here, that's suitable.
I guess the question is, too, whether you want the interviews televised. If you do, they'd need to be in the library or here. If you don't need that, then they could be in West Gallery.
I hadn't, through the chair, I actually haven't thought about the televising, which I think is a fair point. I was actually just thinking that, you know, the west wing room could be a little tight if more than five members of the public show up. And that's why I was thinking of a larger venue, whether it's here, or the library, whatever.
I do think, given, you know, just the discussion we've had, and the compromise that we've had versus, you know, an election, and being, as Mr. Grisilli said, even with early evening, there's going to be people who might be interested in the process, who can attend or miss some of it. So if we can be televised, and folks can watch that later, or so forth, I think that could be important.
I would suggest that we do the same as last time, and have, just through the chair, and have it in the library on the second floor. And that, that's, it's a flat surface, as opposed to us up here interviewing people down there.
Right, that's right.
I don't recall, do you recall, did we televise it last time?
No.
No, I don't know that we did, but I think that would be a better venue for...
So that's a question for the council, if you'd like us to, I mean, we have, we can only attempt to, it's going to depend on whether or not the television technicians are available, and we can book them.
Well, hopefully, we can book them.
Through the chair, I mean, if we can, I would like to see it televised.
Yeah.
I would like to see it televised, if we can, but I would not want to sacrifice all practicality just to televise it.
It's all we need, I think.
You could always come in with your handicap, Mr. Malphy.
That's right. Well, yeah, we could probably just run them, speak into the camera.
All right, I'm going to use the gavel. Ready? Where'd you end?